Okay, we're going to start the meeting. The special meeting of the Planning Commission December 14th. So can we have the roll call, please?
Bela, absent. Kelly?
Here.
Jansen?
Yeah.
Pfeffer?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Chair Swift?
Here. And next, we're going to have the approval of the agenda and Linda, did you want to speak to one of the items on the agenda?
Sure, we're going to recommend that 399 Cypress be continued to the January meeting of the Planning Commission because one of our commissioners has to recuse herself, so we won't have four commissioners here to take action on it. And the applicants have been advised and they are not here. So if you're here for 399 Cypress, you can leave.
And should we do that at that point in time or can we do that now?
Amending the agenda, you should wait approval of the agenda. You're going to have to say that you're doing that. When you go to approve the agenda, you have to say that you're approving the agenda with the subject continuing that to the next meeting. Then you have to vote on it.
Okay.
Chair Swift, question?
Yes, ma'am.
I need to recuse myself from one of the items as well, but does that mean we need to continue that?
No, because we have a quorum here, you'll just have to go ahead and recuse yourself, but we can still hear the item.
Okay. Well, then I don't understand why one person having to recuse themselves on Cypress means we have to postpone it.
Oh, because we need to have four commissioners in the building in order to operate. You have to have four bodies in the building or in the jurisdiction.
Uh huh.
If someone had to zoom in from Fairfax for some reason, like a sick relative, we could still operate, but you have to have four people in the jurisdiction and/or in the building to hold a meeting.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
So do we have an approval or a motion on the agenda with that change?
I move to approve the agenda with the amendment of continuing item three regarding 339 Cypress Drive to the next meeting of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. So the agenda is approved as amended. So I'm going to go on and read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should limit their presentation to three minutes, provide their comments by email, and state their views and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email at lneil@townoffairfax.org to be entered into the record. So with that, there is no items on the consent calendar, so we're going to go on to the first public hearing item, which is 114 Mono Avenue.
Chair Swift? Yeah, I'm going to need to recuse myself from this one because these are my neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you.
So the project proposes to remodel over 50% of the existing single-story house that's on the property, expand it to the rear to create a family room and a third bedroom, expand the front entry by enclosing the front steps, increase the height of a portion of the roof from approximately 16 feet to 21 feet, reconstruct the existing legally non-conforming garage with a partially modified footprint that reduces its square footage and attaches it to the house, and it also proposes to implement a variety of green building, energy efficiency, and site improvements. So the existing house is approximately 1,105 square feet. The rear expansion and front entry addition would add approximately 460 square feet to the house, resulting in approximately 1,565 square foot three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. The house would retain the existing approximate 16-foot-tall roof at the front, and that would span for about 21 feet to the rear. And then at that point, it would increase to 21 feet in height for the remaining approximately 41 feet of the structure. The new garage would be rebuilt mostly in the same location as the existing garage. However, the two-foot rear setback and the approximate three-foot western side setback would remain the same as existing. However, the eastern side of the garage would be reduced in width by approximately 11 feet to accommodate the proposed addition at the back of the house. The northern side of the garage is also proposed to increase in length by about three feet. And that would be within the western side yard and combined side yard setbacks to accommodate parking the property owner's camber van. The northeastern corner of the garage would be attached to the southwestern corner of the house. The garage would provide one covered nine-foot by 19-foot parking space and storage. Additional off-street parking would continue to be provided in the existing driveway, which can accommodate up to three nine-by-19 tandem spaces. So the project site is an approximately 5,000-square-foot rectangle with a 2% slope. It's developed with the existing house that was originally constructed around 1922, the garage, a small playhouse, a concrete patio, and various concrete walkways. The property is located within the RD 5.5-7 residential zone, and it's also within an AE flood zone. According to the elevation certificate prepared for the property, which is attached to the staff report, it's Attachment B, the finished floor of the house, including the proposed addition, exceeds the base flood elevation. The existing property meets the front setback, the eastern side setback, the FAR and the building height requirement. The legally non-conforming garage causes the property to not meet the rear setback, the combined front and rear setback, the western side setback, and the combined side setback. The approximately 51% impervious surface area on the property is legal non-conforming because it was installed prior to the town's adoption of the 35% lot coverage limitation. The project requires approval of a conditional use permit because it's proposing improvements to a property that does not meet the minimum size and width requirements of the RD 5.5-7 zone. It requires approval of a design review permit since it would remodel over 50% of the house, approval of a variance to the minimum and combined side yard setback requirements for extending the length of the garage within the minimum and combined side yard setbacks, and approval of a variance to allow parking to continue, the existing tandem parking to continue within the required side yard. A lot coverage variance is not required because the 50% lot coverage is legal non-conforming, and it would be reduced to approximately 38% as a result of project implementation, which is an improvement over the existing condition. So findings can be made for the requested entitlements. The approval of the conditional use permit would not be a grant of special privilege, nor contravene the doctrines of equity and equal treatment, given that the proposed remodel in addition would result in the property maintaining a similar house size, number of bedrooms, FAR, and setbacks as other properties in the immediate neighborhood. The development and use of the property as approved under the conditional use permit would not create a public nuisance as the remodel in addition comply with RD 5.5-7 residential zone setback and height regulations and would not cause the property to exceed the FAR requirement. The existing legally non-conforming lot coverage would be reduced from approximately 51 to approximately 38%. The project is consistent with the general plan and proposes a number of green building and energy efficiency improvements that result in better development of the property than would otherwise be the case. The project design complies with the design review criteria set forth in the town code. The proposed square footage and building height would be within the FAR and height limitations required by the RD 5.5-7 residential zone and would not be out of scale with the neighborhood or site. The proposed exterior materials would be similar to existing and compatible with the surrounding area. The house and garage would match in materials, colors, and roof lines. All the proposed exterior light fixtures would be dark sky compliant. The redesigned house and garage, new siding, doors, windows, exterior lighting, brick pavers in the driveway, and drought tolerant landscaping would increase the property's visual interest. The siding and design of the residence is generally in keeping with the other residents in the neighborhood and the town, and provides a balanced, well-composed design on the project site. The siding of the existing house and the garage and narrow property width are the features that warrant the granting of the requested minimum and combined side yard setback variances for the reconstruction of the garage and also the variance to allow tandem parking in a required side yard. There are other properties in the vicinity that have structures and tandem parking within the minimum and combined side yard setbacks. Therefore, the granting of these variances will not be a grant of special privilege. The strict application of the setback regulations would result in unreasonable hardship for the property owner since they would not be able to park their larger vehicle in the garage, and they would be required to create parking in the front yard, which would diminish the quality of the experience on the street, negatively impact the view of the property from the public right-of-way, and limit the ability to beautify the frontage with landscaping and enhance the appearance of the streetscape. The existing garage and driveway are entirely on the project property, and the additional three feet of garage length would not obstruct pedestrian or vehicular visibility for people walking or along or driving on Mono Avenue. Granting of the variances would not create a safety hazard or any other condition inconsistent with the objectives of the zoning ordinance. So that concludes the staff report, and the recommendation is to approve the project by adopting Resolution 2023-34 that sets forth the findings and the conditions of the project approval.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission have questions for staff? Go ahead.
I have one question. The lot coverage is reduced from 0.51 to 0.38. If I look at the plans, that's mostly due to the changes in the pavements around the buildings. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Nope. Would the applicant like to come up and speak about their project and be there for any questions that the commission might have of them?
Hi, Justin Simeon, owner, along with my wife, of 114 Mono Avenue. So yeah, we're undertaking the project because we have two kids, mixed gender. One, who's right there, who's just about to turn nine, and the other older boy, who's unfortunately homesick tonight, is 11. And we have a two-bedroom house now and really, really want to be able to stay in Fairfax and stay on the street as well. We have a great, great neighborhood there. One of the neighbors is here, the next-door neighbor there. And that's really the reason we want to undertake the project. We've done a lot of work over the few years that we've been planning it to really get things dialed in as best we can. The parking was one of the things we went back and forth about. You know, it's really kind of the existing driveway sets where the garage can be, and that was something we talked about a lot. And also, the lot coverage was also something that we have discussed quite a bit and are looking forward, actually, to taking out a lot of that concrete that's covering the side yards and the back patios and the like, and reinstalling something that's a little bit more permeable and helps with the drainage in the area. So. Anything else? Questions, yeah?
Sorry, does anyone have questions for the applicant? Nope, thank you. You can sit down. Now we're going to have open it for public comment on the application. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make on the application? If so, come on up.
My name's Justin Hausman. I live next door. My wife and I own the property at 120 Mono. I speak for her. We offer our full support. Part of the reason that we bought our house was we rented down the street from them, and those friends, our families are close friends. We hope they can stay there. We hope we can all stay there. We've discussed the plans with them. I've seen the plans. We have no issues at all. We're looking forward to seeing what they can do. And yeah, I hope that you all see that they're well-thought-out plans, and we're all looking forward to seeing what they could do so they get our full support.
There are no hands on line, Chair Swift.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it, close public comment, and bring it back for discussion to the commission and the motion.
So I summarize for myself that basically the variances that we're looking at is they're both existing. There is already currently parking in the site backyard, and it basically stays that way. And I think the variation in the setbacks are existing, and basically we're reapproving that. Essentially, there's part of the non-compliant garage that's lumped off, and that now becomes the house. That's roughly how you could see it, which arguably is an improvement. So I don't see anything particularly that concerns me. It looks like a pretty straightforward proposal, and it makes sense in the context and may be good to mention. I think we've seen these parking in the side setbacks before, and there are a lot of neighborhoods in Fairfax where that basically is not really that applicable because most of those buildings built in the 20s to the 40s were actually set up that way. So you can't change that. So to me, I would be willing to make a motion to approve. But let's see what the honor commissioner says.
Anyone else have comments? Go ahead.
I'd like to just comment that I think it's a good project. I'm in support of it. I think it's very well, it appears to be very well thought through and well documented, and I appreciate that.
Yep, agree. The materials were great. I think this is a project that helps the applicant, and I think it's great for the neighborhood in general. So I think a win-win for everyone.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-34, Resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application Number 23-33 for conditional use permit and design review permit, 40-50% remodel, and an approximately 460 square foot addition to the single-family residence, a minimum and combined side yard setback variance for the reconstructed garage, and a variance to allow tandem parking in a required side yard at 114 Mono Avenue.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Newton?
Recused.
Chair Swift?
Aye. Thank you. The motion carries. There's a 10-day appeal process, and information on that can be obtained from the planning department. Thank you all, and good luck with the project. Okay, can we have the staff report on the second item? Tamil pious?
Yep, this is for 38 Tamil pious. The project includes construction of a two-story addition to the rear north side of the existing two-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence, including a second-story playroom and a first-floor dining room expansion pantry and laundry area. The addition will increase the residence square footage from approximately 1,060 square feet to approximately 1,325 square feet. The project does not constitute a 50% remodel per the town code definition. The addition will not project into any of the required setbacks, nor will it result in the site exceeding the permitted 35% lot coverage limit or the 40% floor area ratio. The owner is proposing to remove 136 square feet of impervious patio and walkway areas as part of the project, which will decrease the lot coverage of the site slightly from 0.333 to 0.327. So it is improving the situation. At 25 feet in height and only two stories, the structure complies with the height limit for the zone it's in. Site's not located within a quarter mile of any known northern spotted owl nesting site. The property does not meet the minimum 22,000-square-foot size or the 110-foot width requirement for a site that has a 31% slope, as this one does, and therefore it requires the approval of conditional use permit prior to any improvement or additions on the site. Other homes in the immediate neighborhood on similar-sized and sloped properties maintain similar setbacks. It's a neighborhood where there are a lot of structures built up to the property line, or they maintain setbacks of zero to three feet for accessory structures and less than five feet for main residences, which were permitted for lots that were less than 50 feet wide between 1931 and 1973. So it's quite an eclectic neighborhood there. They are proposing some new light fixtures for the addition, two on the west side of the addition, on either side of the two new windows, and one on the north side of the addition. The fixtures will be dark sky compliant. If you see the reduced plan sets A302 and A701, it calls that out. So we're recommending the following findings. We can support the project. We provided a table, and we said, "See the chart below," but it should have said, "See the chart above." And residents throughout the immediate neighborhood, they range in size from a 720-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bathroom, single-family residence with a floor area ratio of 0.15 to a 2,575-square-foot, four-bedroom, three-and-one-half bathroom residence with a floor area ratio of 0.54. So this proposed 1,606-square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bathroom, actually, three-bedroom, right, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence is, will not be out of character with the neighborhood and is similar to developments on similar-sized and sloped properties in the area. The proposed addition doesn't constitute a 50% remodel, as I stated before. It doesn't add bedrooms that would increase the capacity of the residence to house additional residents, and it does not encroach into any of the required setbacks or exceed the FAR lot coverage limitations. Therefore, the project will not cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to adjoining properties. The proposed addition does not change the residential character of the building or the use of the property, and therefore it's not contrary to the objective goals or standards contained in the Fairfax general plan, and it complies with Title 17, complies with the town code, Chapter 17, the zoning ordinance of the town code. The proposed addition at the rear of the structure will maintain the existing streetscape, and it will not change the height of the existing building, and therefore the proposed addition will result in an equal or better development of the premises than might otherwise be the case, and it's in the public interest to approve the project. The Ross Valley Fire Department is requiring that a contractor, I'm sorry, the Ross Valley Sanitary District is requiring that as a condition of approval, a contractor video all laterals serving the property prior to the project final inspection and submit it to the district with the required fee and form. The Ross Valley Fire Department is requiring that the house be sprinklered in compliance with the National Fire Protection Association 13D requirement. No other agencies or departments had any specific conditions for the project, and therefore we're recommending that you approve Application 2324 by adopting Resolution 2023-35, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And I'll just point out one thing that taught me a lesson. I need to always wear my reading glasses. So in the staff report, I indicated that the reduced set of plans were dated November 22nd, right? But they're stamped the 21st, but they should be stamped November 22nd to match the large size. So that's a correction to the staff report. The plans you're looking at, everything's dated, should be dated November 22nd. We'll make that correction to the report. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for staff? Go ahead.
Just a quick note, which is a typo. Page three, top first paragraph, it references the UBC. That should be the CBC or the IBC residential.
Okay, thank you.
Question on page two. Can you explain why it does not qualify as a 50% remodel? What is the determination that it's not?
Yeah, so we count, anytime you're touching, well, I guess I'd have to pull out my "Why do you think it is?" I guess I would say, let me ask. What I do is I highlight the walls that are being structurally altered, right? And then I count the square footage of the new addition and any rooms that are being structurally altered, and I compare it to the square footage of the existing house.
Square footage based?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Newton?
Thanks. So Linda, I'm just confused because on the town's website, the item, today's meeting list is a special meeting, but at the end of the reso, it says it was adopted, the resolution was adopted a regular meeting. Is there a disconnect there?
Thank you.
So a follow-up question. Is that what it said? I think that's what it says on the 114 Mono reso. I think that's what it says maybe on all the resos, so you may need to correct all of them.
I will do that. I'll check with Kara. Tell her the same thing.
Any other questions for staff? Go ahead.
Yeah, one additional, just clarification. If you were to ignore the existing studio and the existing garage with parking as being non-conformant per 1970s, so you just look at the house, then the addition would not need any variance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to come up and provide any information you want, and then we can ask you questions?
Thank you. Joe Hülings, I'm the applicant. My wife Nikki, we've lived in our house for about six years, and we're starting to outgrow it with our family. And while we have three bedrooms, the one thing we're lacking is really living space. We've got a lot of smallish rooms, and we've been trying to figure out how do we solve that? And like a lot of houses in the area, I'm sure we have kind of dodgy foundations, and so we're trying to solve that by building new foundations, and if we build new foundation, we thought we would make it two-story to get more value out of it, and we've worked really hard to kind of comply prescriptively with all of the planning regulations, setbacks, floor ratios and lot coverage, and also to come in under the 50% ratio for a substantial remodel. I know that the fire department has requested sprinklers because they've interpreted it as a 50% remodel, so I hope to make that clarification to them. But we want to work with all our neighbors and make sure that this is acceptable to them, and we have great neighbors, and we want to stay here for the long term, so we're just trying to figure out how to make our property work for us long term.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant? If you want, just stay up there just in case. No questions for the applicant? Go sit down. Okay, we're going to open it up for public comment on this application. If anyone would like to speak, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Adams. I reside at 47 Tamalpais Road, across the street from the applicants, and I wanted to go on record not opposing the project. I support it, so I wanted to make sure it was in the project record. You can see the addition from my house, from the deck, in a couple of spots. It does not impact the tree lines. It fits nicely, the size and shape of the addition fits nicely in shape with the house and is really no different, in fact, and smaller than one of the adjacent houses, so we're very happy, I'm very happy with the proposal and look forward to it happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Thank you. I'm Lynn Logier. I live at 32 Tamalpais, so I'm one house down, and the addition is in my full view from my rear garden. I'm very happy with it. We did a, we are an eclectic neighborhood. We did a major remodel in 2012, and I'm familiar, painfully familiar with what it takes to make that work in an idiosyncratic, small Fairfax cottage, so I think what Nikki and Joe have put together is completely appropriate and frankly, very modest. As Susan said, it fits visually, it fits. It's set back significantly from the road. All of it is in the back of the home, and I strongly support it. I also, since I'm here, wanted to thank all of you for serving as commissioners. I know that this is an important role and no small commitment of time and care, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak on this application? You can, if you'd like.
She's at 36 Tamalpais. You have her email in front of you.
Forget it. Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands raised online. Chair Swift?
Thank you. So I'm going to close public comment on this application and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Okay. It's quite similar as the project before us. Item number one, the addition itself is in compliance, and it fits within the neighborhood. It's the older buildings that were built under different zoning requirements that are out of compliance, and that's basically why it's before us, so I am pleased to make a motion.
Any other comments?
I would like to make a comment. I'm very familiar with the house. I actually used to live about a block away. And another story that I have about this house is the very first time I ever was invited to a party in Fairfax, California, was the next-door neighbor to this house, long, long, long ago, a colleague of mine rented the house next door, so I just happened to know that house from way back when also. I think it might have been 36. But anyway, so I know the neighborhood well. I know the house well. I actually had the opportunity to walk through it before the current owners purchased it. It's a wonderful, little charming neighborhood house in a charming part of our town. I would describe this addition as modest and good for the neighborhood. So I'm in support of it.
Yep, I agree with everything I said, and just wanted to note, sort of like the project before this, I think the plans and how much of what we saw was dedicated to showing the lack of impact on the streetscape really helps demonstrate that this project was developed with a care for the neighborhood. Appreciate that.
Any other discussion from commission? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-35, Resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 23-34 for a conditional use permit for the construction of an addition to the existing single-family residence at 38 Tamalpais Road.
You have a second?
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. Motion carries. There is a 10-day appeal process. Information on that can be obtained from Linda Neal at Planning Department. Thank you, and good luck with the project. So I think we're going to take about a two-minute break here while we reset. So we're going to go on to Agenda Item 4, Consideration for Recommendation to the Town Council's Zoning Amendments to Implement Program 2D Standards for Low-Impact Clustured Residential Development on Large Sites of the Housing Element. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, Chair Swift and Planning Commission, thanks for having me today, and I'm here with Andrew Hill with the firm Dian Bati, who's been helping us on the housing element and the zoning, related zoning code updates. So I'm going to share my screen and do a somewhat brief PowerPoint presentation to kind of guide you through the code updates, and then we can open it up for questions. Okay, looks good. And so again, just to start off, last night we had a town council meeting, as you may be aware, and we did adopt the housing element, and also importantly, we certified the environmental impact reports, and which gives us the, kind of the SEQA coverage for this particular code update. So we will, this is also a public hearing, so after the commission gets through asking questions, and we should probably conduct the public hearing to give the public the opportunity to comment. So as far as background, we have identified vacant sites with residential zoning, which can help meet the moderate RENA and also the above-moderate-income RENA, I will say. And so there's a zoning strategy to facilitate this. So as you'll notice, we are, the RENA allocation breaks down with 184 above-moderate-income apartments and 71 units, could be homes, single-family homes or apartments, modern income 71, those could also be apartments, single-family homes, just that those are the units that are required, and the hillside regulations could be modified to help accommodate a few more units. We're not, as you'll see at later slides, we're not talking about a lot of new units, but just a few units here and there. But every little bit counts. It's another tool in the toolbox, so it's still an important change, even if it doesn't net a high number of units. So with this, we are proposing an implementation to Program 2D that is in that we say draft housing element, although I guess we should change that word to final housing element now, subject to HCD review. We're not proposing an increase in any permitted density, so any zone density that's currently on the books right now will not change. We are adding an option to cluster small-scale housing on sites that are over one acre, so basically taking the allowable density, allowing it to be concentrated on smaller lots. There's a requirement that if a developer or property owner were to take advantage of the cluster zoning option, that they would need to set aside 75% of the site to remain in a natural state, and the reason that's possible here is because most of these sites are steep hillside sites, and they're primarily, they're very constrained, and so they would make good open space candidates. We are also leaving the ridgeline protections essentially alone, and I would suggest even enhancing them in some cases, as we'll go through here in a couple of slides. So the important thing here is we do have a general plan connection to this. Figure OS1 is a map of visual resources. That is one of the policies that we are implementing with this cluster zoning option, is to better implement this visual resources map. And so, also, so that's on the left side. On the right side shows you where some of these sites that are larger than one acre are located and are candidate sites for the cluster zoning option. So with this amendment, we are touching, in fact, they're relatively short chapters, so we are essentially completely replacing three chapters, 17060, 170272, and 17124, and making strategic updates within each one of those chapters, but just for convenience, we'll probably just completely replace the chapters as far as the ordinance goes, just to make it easier to update. However, you'll see in your exhibits, we did try to do a careful job of red lines to show, underline and strikeouts where we have made those amendments. Chair Swift did notice a couple of errors that we made, which are included in an errata. Did we get them the errata, Linda?
We don't have that.
Okay, okay. I will get it to you in a minute. I think I have some extra copies here. And essentially, we forgot to underline a definition, and we made an error in the beginning of the ordinance where we didn't specifically refer to the chapters. Here we go.
As a part of this, would you, as part of your discussion, read out the change to the major ridge one, just so that Commissioner Newton?
Yes, yeah, so basically.
When we get to there, yeah.
Yeah, so I can go through it right now. So basically, there's an error to Section 3 where we just needed to refer specifically to Chapter 17060, Chapter 17072, and Chapter 17124 of Title 17, just to make it clear that those are the chapters that are being edited. There is also just a cross-out, underline error under the definition for major ridges, where we wanted to refer to General Plan Figure OS1 and not refer to visual resources map number nine, because we wanted to make that connection to the general plan. And then we also had a definition for model efficient landscape ordinance, but we neglected to underline it, which represents that it's a new definition. And then there may be other errors that you have discovered through the code, and just to be clear, we can add those to the errata. If they're just typos, like a missing comma or colon, those can be administratively added at any time, but if they're more substantive, we'd want to try to identify those and point those out to the town council as part of the recommendation. So anyway, with that housekeeping out of the way, we'll continue on here with the presentation. So there's, the first chapter that we are proposing to revise is the Ridgeline Development Chapter. So the purpose of this chapter is to preserve and protect scenic ridgelines. So we have added some objective standards, which is particularly important in this current state law regulatory environment, where we've added more specific criteria for the review of applications. We've made more consistent references to major ridgelines. We've added some additional compatibility standards related to lighting, colors, and materials. We've added some additional height standards with upper-story setbacks to help new buildings kind of blend into hillsides by requiring setbacks, quantify the limits on roof lengths and projections into scenic view sheds, and we've added, WELO is Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. It's a state law that requires that new landscaping be efficient in terms of water use, and so we've added a water-efficient landscape compliance package requirements. So the next chapter that we're updating is the Hill Area Residential Overlay. So we really didn't need to change very much in this chapter. It's very well done, so these are more or less surgical updates. There are some clarifications to the application procedures, provisions for more than one ADU, JADU added, which is implementing a housing element program for larger lots. And then, of course, the requirement for WELO compliant landscape package, which implements that provision of state law. So, and this is the major change, is the addition of the low-impact clustered residential option. So this gives the Planning Commission the authority to permit a variety of lot sizes and smaller housing types, as long as the base density isn't exceeded. So basically, kind of taking the overall density for a site and allowing it to be concentrated on a smaller portion of the parcel. It also allows the Planning Commission to change lot configurations, building sizes, to preserve views, reduce hazards, minimize gradings, protect the environment. So just in concept, it just, you know, it allows you to kind of reposition structures on a larger parcel if it kind of improves some component of that. Either you're making a more efficient development or you can move the home a little bit to better protect ridgelines, or, you know, there's a variety of reasons that you would be able to move or cluster those homes into one portion of the lot. So this is a few things. There's standards that allow for narrow streets to be improved. There's an additional parking requirements, like, for example, for tiny homes, if one is proposed. Like for example, for tiny homes, if one is proposed, uh, there's a maximum building size of 3,500 square feet, which is your, um, current maximum. And then 75% of the site is required to remain in the natural states. Um, and then there is an optional, um, allowance for small community facilities, uh, permitted, but not required. The last chapter is the upland residential zone. Um, and this is again, these are very just kind of small strategic changes. Um, the low impact clustered options incorporated by reference, uh, there's up to two JADUs, um, or ADUs or JADUs permitted to implement housing element program one M. And standards for yards and parking can be, can be modified, um, to be able to implement the low impact cluster development plan. So just to go back to the study session. So at the study session, we heard, um, about the OS one visual resources map. There's a little bit confusion about which map we, we needed to use for policy purposes. Um, and this is the one that's in the general plan. So I mean, I know, I, I think we talked about this a little bit at the study session, but it, it is a little, creates a little, uh, uh, requires a little bit interpretation by staff in order to figure out where the ridgelines are where in relation to, to topography. Um, we do have other maps back at town hall, which are related to this map at the same scale, which allows you to, to lay parcel lines on top of this map and identify where the ridgelines are in relation to parcel lines. So there is additional information that is a, that is available, um, at city hall. And so we've added, in, in, in relation to that, we added a provision in the code that kind of speaks to that and allows staff to kind of do that additional research to better identify where the ridgelines are in relation to, um, properties. This is a, an explanation of the development capacity. This was discussed at, um, the study session. So we, there is currently a slope density formula in the zoning code, which allows you to make a calculation based on the steepness of the, the lots in relation, and you know, basically to simplify it, it allows you to find where the flattest portion of the property is. And also assigns a density based on how topographically challenged that property is. Um, and so that's not being changed. What we did add is a clarification that we are not changing the base, um, density allowances for the site. So for example, if you have a, a UR one, seven or UR ten site, what that means is that for every home site, you have to have sent a seven acres or 10 acres of property. So we, Fairfax has very few properties that are that large, um, within those zoning districts. And so, but hypothetically you could use clustering within those zoning designations, but we just simply don't have any properties that are large enough to be able to use the cluster zoning option. Cause you essentially do the calculation, you get one unit. The greatest potential is within the R six district, and that's because the lots, the base zoning allows smaller lot sizes. Um, and we came, uh, Andrew can speak more to this because he, um, had his folks had died about to do some detailed analysis on this. But we essentially found, uh, five sites where two or three units can typically be clustered. Kind of back to my point where we're not generating a lot of new units out of this particular proposal, but it does allow a few more units to be added here and there. And in addition to this, there's probably one site which could allow 10, 10 units. So we do have one larger site which could allow 10 units. But the majority of the sites, you're only going to net about two or three units, uh, by using the cluster zoning option. And again, it doesn't increase the number of units you could have. It just allows you to cluster them in more logical location on the property. So we had some discussion at the study session on open space terminology, which is admittedly a little muddled in the code. We have three types of open space that are, um, spoken about or regulated in the zoning ordinance. The first is kind of private open space. That's balconies and patios for residents, either with multifamily or single family properties. There's common open space, which is shared open space, like, you know, maybe an apartment complex or a condominium complex or a single family development. That's like a planned development where you have shared open space for the common use of residents. And then there's the natural open space, which is what we're primarily concerned with here, where we have the 75% requirement. We've also incorporated some dark sky provisions, uh, so that as, um, if and when new homes are added, um, they can better blend into the hillsides, um, and at least in terms of the, the light that they're producing. Um, and so we've added those and we can take a closer look at section seventeen oh six oh five oh A seven. Um, if we wanted to take a closer look at those provisions. And then the other changes since the study session, um, we added scenic highways as a place where we would, uh, be concerned with in terms of relation to significant views and ridgelines. We've added a new provision to restrict homes within the ridgeline scenic corridor to reduce the visual mass of new structures, kind of to make it better blend in. Cause the whole purpose of your regulations are to help homes kind of tuck into the hillside. So you can't see them as easily from surrounding properties. Um, a requirement to use photographic visual simulations, again, to kind of help, um, demonstrate that the home, home or homes will blend into the hillsides. Emergency access requirements to retain and maintain existing fire roads. Uh, locate development and already disturbed land as feasible. Allow for existing trails to be set aside as part of the approval process. For example, if you had an existing trail that was on a property that was, um, set to be developed and maybe it's been used for 10, 15 years, kind of informally as a open space trail, but it's on private property. It would, it would, uh, kind of, uh, allow those to be set aside as part of that 75% open space requirement and potentially establish a legal, um, way for, um, neighbors to access it with a conservation easement. And then we also made some corrections to section seventeen one twenty four, um, accessory uses, uh, to be consistent with the, um, state law in terms of ADU and GADU. And then also code changes that we made back in November to the ADU regulations. So the next step, um, is we would hope to have a recommendation from the planning commission tonight. Um, and then we could go to the, um, town council, uh, for a first reading in, uh, early January. So with that, we are available for questions.
I'm going to go last with questions on this one. Does anyone have questions for staff?
Yes, I do. Um, going back to, uh, earlier on in the presentation, you had a slide that shows the ridge lines OS one, and on the second part of the slide was a map. That showed where the, we had the map here that shows where the low impact clustered lots are. That map I don't see in the documentation. How is that map referenced within the context of this ordinance?
I think I'll kick that over to Andrew. Do you want to explain the context of this, the second map? Sites for low impact clustered housing standards.
Yeah, that, so that map is really a, our, our study map. Um, we identified all sites that were larger than, than one, oh, I'm sorry. Um, it's, it's a map that we prepared for our internal purposes. We, those are sites, um, that are, that have residential zoning already that are larger than one acre in size. Not, as Jeff mentioned in the presentation, not all of them would actually, you would not, uh, under current zoning, you wouldn't be able to cluster housing on, on all of them, because some of them have a minimum lot size, you know, you can't cluster one unit, right? So, um, so really this, this, this is just showing sites over one acre in size with residential zoning and then a subset of that, which are almost, almost exclusively the RS six sites are the ones where clustering could actually be feasible.
Okay. Second question, and I couldn't find it back in my notes, but, uh, um, when a property is developed with, uh, a, a cluster development, I presume there is going to be a deed restriction of some sort to, uh, warrant that that 75% is, uh, for a certain period of time, I remember 55 years. Is that correct? I couldn't find it back in my notes. So that is stated in the ordinance?
Do we specify? I would have to double check that. I think we say it would have to be set aside, whether it says it's a deed restriction specifically.
Or any other legal form.
Right. It could be another legal form.
I had a question about that, if, if I can come back.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Okay. We'll come back to that.
Yeah. We can, we, we, we can look that up and find that code reference.
Okay. I have one more and then I'll end it off. The dark sky, uh, requirements, they only apply to these sections? Or do they apply to all new developments going forward? So is that woven into one of the sections here? Or is that?
Yes, it's woven. It's specifically woven into the, the ridge line section.
Okay.
Yeah.
And not in other, not in other.
It wouldn't, no, it wouldn't be universal throughout the town. Now, we, we did talk about, um, just looking forward, we did talk about, um, incorporating dark sky provisions into the zoning ordinance as kind of a universal concept. Uh, but that would be something we take on next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. So I guess, uh, first I'll do the question related to your question on the, how the restriction on open space actually functions. So I'm here, I think. It's a long code section, uh, seventeen oh seven two oh nine oh H nine on page nineteen of exhibit A. So that's where it says that at least 75% of the site must remain in its natural state and be preserved as open space with a conservation easement dedication or transfer to the town, another agency. So if the lot owner is, you know, it's sort of a trade to encourage, um, developing the couple of units by clustering them. And we're saying that, you know, the trade off is that you are going to preserve this as open space is in other jurisdictions, is it often that the, that 75% is sort of, um, dedicated or transferred to a town or public agencies? But it seems to me that part of the responsibility, if you're getting the benefit of, of clustering the homes is to maintain the property so that it's not a requirement for the, you know, it's not an extra burden for the town to nest, you know? Somebody has a landslide prone property and they say, well, now 75% of it is that landslide area is now the town's responsibility versus, um, mine, and I get to cluster housing too.
So correct. You, you are correct. We would, it would not be obligating the town. It, there, there are a variety of ways that it, it could happen. Um, I mean, if it was a desirable, um, like it was right next to existing open space. And for, and for some reason, the, that open space, there, it would benefit the community at large to make a connection between an existing piece of open space and maybe a, a major road. Then you could see where that could, there could be a public, um, access easement placed on that. You could also see another situation where, as you say, it may not be beneficial really, because it's not near any open space, but it has, uh, wildlife potential, or maybe it protects oak trees or some other reason. Uh, and then that could be a private, um, easement. But it would basically place a restriction on the property, but it would still be owned and maintained by that private property owner. So there's, so I think it's written intentionally to be flexible so that it could be, it could go through the approval process. And then there could be a decision made on what form that restriction takes, um, through the approval process.
Okay. And then so the, this may be a, a more technical question for the town attorney, but then we're confident that where it says, uh, restriction that is approved by the town attorney and recorded in the recorder's office gives us the flexibility to not give the developer by right, saying, I'm choosing that you have to take this because that's the only way I'm doing this development.
That's correct. It was written with maximum flexibility in mind.
Thank you. Um, and then my other question, I guess, is also sort of enforcement related on the new, um, dark sky language, which I like. Some of it seems to be relating to how the property is used after development, uh, you know, certain lights have to go out if there's nobody outside at night, things like that. Um, how, how does that actually factor into the, uh, design, uh, approval process? You know, do we go in after the fact, or is this something that we would consider if somebody wants to do a subsequent development? And we say, well, actually you have to fix compliance with all these things that are not in, in line with our ordinance that you'd already done.
Yeah, I think the, uh, I mean, the mechanism that I could think that would work for that would be like a require of a lighting plan as a condition of approval. So they'd have to submit some sort of lighting plan to the, to the, the, the town planner prior to issuance of occupancy or something along those lines. And then we would verify that it was dark sky compliant at that time.
Got it. But then after the fact, if like three months.
Yeah, it gets into the code enforcement world at that point. So, yeah.
But just like any other.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, it, those can be tough. Admittedly, those can be tough to enforce. So, yeah.
Um, and then last question is on the, um, maintenance or retaining of the fire road language. Was that, you know, I know we talked about it at the study session also. Was that something specifically that the fire department looked at and suggested the language for? Or was that drafted by the planning department to sort of reflect our discussion last time?
I think we drafted the language, but the Ross Valley Fire Department did, did want to make sure that there's, those fire roads are kind of made, um, kept clear. Because the important thing that they stressed to us is that they really like to have kind of two points of access to a parcel so they can get at it from two different directions in case a, um, a road is blocked. And those fire roads are, are great for them because they, you know, they're not the regular roads. So it gives them a second way to get to something if it's, if the fire happens. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Newton, you have your hand raised.
I do. I have a couple of questions if I might. Uh, thank you so much, uh, for the presentation. If I could dive into some of the language, uh, we've talked a little bit about it. I even want to, uh, talk about something, uh, Commissioner Pfeffer raised, but in seventeen oh sixty ten, uh, we say the purpose of the chapter is to implement the general plans policies for open space and resource conservation. Comma, conserve the general public welfare by conserving existing scene of resources and sense of community and or neighborhood identity now afforded by the presence of the unurbanized open spaces on the ridge tops above the town by preserving them in an open and scenicly attractive state. And that sounds like a list, but it only has two items in it. And I'm not sure if it's meant to be one, uh, one thing or multiple things. Because in the next sentence, we say to this end, which suggests it's just one thing as opposed to a list with a comma between conservation and conserve. So if you guys could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
So are you basically saying we have a big, long run on sentence?
I'm saying we started with a big, long run on sentence. And I understand that, but it was one sentence that described one purpose to conserve the general public welfare by doing blah, 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 blah. Now we have the purpose is to implement the general plan's policies for open space and resource conservation. And initially I thought, well, I'd put an and conserve the general public welfare. And, but then I didn't know, does by conserving existing scene of resources go along with implementing general plans policies? I think it does. So I use different punctuation altogether. And then when I got to the next sentence, which is also new, we've got to this end, which is singular and doesn't, that suggests that it's, it's all one purpose. But the sentence is not structured that way in my view.
Could we do something along the lines of the purpose of this chapter is to colon implement the general plans policy for open space and resource conservation, semicolon, conserve the general public welfare by conserving the scenic resources and sense of community? Then it would go all the way down to attractive state and then put another semicolon, then go and objective criteria for review of applications are and and objective review of applications?
I think whatever you and the town attorney think is the best way of writing this succinctly so that it actually accomplishes what you want it to accomplish. I mean, I have nothing against, you know, any of these goals. I just wanted to be a little bit clear what the purpose is. If we got a whole section on purpose, let's, let's be a little bit more romantic.
Yeah, I think I would agree with you that there's really kind of three purposes there kind of jammed together as.
Is it three?
Yeah.
Is an end to these ends. And I think that will fix it. What she's talking about.
Okay, the other suggestion me is we put an and between the word conservation and conserve and conserve. And then we put after that attractive state period, we go and to this end, objective criteria for review of applications. And to these ends, objective criteria for review of applications. So I think that would fix it.
And I like that. It preserves the whole section that's in the current version, so it's fine, thanks. My next question, I mean, you know, this is near and dear to me, we've spent a lot of time on this. We've got new things beyond definitions, we've got terms of reference. And we've still got the unless, unless, unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning, you know? And I'm just like, what? You know, like, okay, is there a difference between a definition and a term of reference?
Yeah, I think the attempts was just to try to be more precise. So I I think a term of reference probably expands it a little bit. So.
Okay, just bizarre. And then to leave in the unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning is just like, okay, let's let's expand it with a definition that I don't, you know, with a new term of reference, term of reference term that I don't understand, okay. It just, and let's see. What else do I have comments? So right now you have for major ridges, those areas located on general plan figure OS one map of visual resources map. And I think the second map is to put the augmented by additional topographic reference mapping by town staff. And this just raises the whole issue that we went through with the prior planning director regarding thing that I find ironic, which is that I do not have a visual understanding of what the ridge line scenic corridors definition means. It's like I want to take all the mashed potatoes and make a map of Fairfax that has ridge lines and figure out what the extent of this definition is, and you're not touching it. You're just not touching it. And it it it's hard for me to fathom. It would be really wonderful if some creative person in our community could come up with a topographic map of the town of Fairfax to help me understand the definition of the ridge line scenic corridor. Because when we went through it in great detail with our prior planning director, you know, I think at the end of the day, we ended up throwing up our hands in the air and giving up trying to create an update to visual resource map number nine OS one, which are as I understand the same map. But I digress. The major ridges are located on general plan figure OS one. And what we've got are a legend on that map that doesn't use the term major ridges. It uses ridge lines and ridge line scenic corridors, visually significant areas, scenic highways, conifer and conifer hardwood vegetation, stream courses, views and vistas, points, gateways. But it doesn't include the term major ridges. And it, you know, it does use the term ridge line, which is if you go down to that definition, is the uppermost line in elevation traversing a major ridge. And I I raise this or chain of hills. I raise this because when you get down to number six, seventeen oh sixty no, there it is, seventeen oh sixty oh fifty A six on page nine. The previous language said no roads or streets shall be permitted to traverse a major ridge. I mean, it said, we used to just say ridge. And now it says a major ridge. And you know, that way it was written before, it just said ridge and that wasn't defined. But ridge line was, and ridge line just meant the top piece. And I almost think there, I don't know. Are we just assuming that all the ridge lines on OS one are major ridges? The red lines on OS one?
Yeah, I I think the answer to your question is we weren't trying to fix everything with this chapter, we were just trying to as gently as possible incorporate the cluster zoning option in it.
Well, I don't understand why you would put major in that section at seventeen oh sixty oh fifty A six, if you didn't have some basis, is it because?
I think it was making.
Ridge, ridge was not defined, major ridge is defined, but major ridge is defined as depicted in the map. And the map doesn't use the term major ridge in the legend. And so it's not, you know, I understand we're not trying to fix it because it is quite inscrutable in some ways. However, I wish we could be more concise if we're gonna change it about what we need, you know, i.e. the red lines on OS one. You know, anyway, so that's something I I wish you guys would think about. Let's see the definition we already talked about. There's a provision in oh sixty oh forty, and I'm sorry, jumping around, which I understand you guys are trying to create more objective criteria for determining the significant view quarters, but it sounds like the planning commission couldn't base their own observations or couldn't form their decision based on their own observations and that they would have to limit their decision making to photographic evidence. Seventeen oh sixty oh forty A one. Was that your intent?
Magic site. I see, so the.
I mean, you could add a among other things.
So.
But if you're trying to.
So I think you're you're thinking that it's limiting it to examining photographs, which might be too constraining, like like a planning commissioner, she could just go out there and 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 view with his or her own eyes.
Yeah, amazing.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good fix.
Yeah, I guess my concern about adding major is that if it's limiting the existing language in any way, I have a concern with that and I don't understand it. And then finally, with respect to the language that Commissioner Pfeffer was talking to you guys about. Is there a difference when we talk about remaining in its natural state between undisturbed and previously disturbed land that would have any relevance to this? So that's on page nineteen. Seventeen oh seventy-two oh nine. Development Design Standards. And Commissioner Pfeffer had asked you guys about the dedication of the open space to the town and and we talked about whether or not that was, you know, something the town was going to be obligated to pick up and, you know. But I was wondering about the requirement that the lands stay in its natural state. Its natural state. And and just wondering if in other places, I think we've talked about previously disturbed land, and I can't think of where it is, but I don't know, maybe we say remain in a natural state, so we don't have to recreate, you know, some historical scenario, anyway, it's just a
So just just to make sure I'm clear on the concern, so I I think what you're saying is it it may be a natural state, like potentially unstable. And it could be a disturbed natural state, so I I think you're looking maybe for more general language that we would try to maybe reach more of an ideal natural state? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, one of the concerns I have is my big understanding that to the extent land may have been disturbed historically, there may be different liabilities associated with it than undisturbed land. And and if somebody has land that's previously been disturbed and they want to ensure that it is safe, let's say it's prone to landslides or something, and they are concerned that they might be liable for that, then they could conceivably change the landscape in such a way that it made the property safer while at the same time leaving it in a natural state, like not with a building on it. In an undeveloped, natural, open space kind of way.
Okay. Right, okay. Okay.
Okay, those are my comments and questions, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly, do you have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna go on to mine then. So I think you addressed the meaning in and this is in the ridge line development. What was meant by augmented by additional topographic reference mapping by town staff? So using like overlays you may have over that OS one map to be a little bit more specific to a parcel.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And and we have our resident expert on those maps, Linda, to describe those if you would like a better description of what those are.
We have another map that's exact same map, but it's called suitability for open space and it talks about like, you know, wildfire, it it superimposes the ridge lines on that map over a map that has all the parcels on it. So we can compare the two and figure out if a parcel is actually in the ridge line scenic corridor.
Okay. And going through, I'm gonna have questions and then comments about the draft. Because for some of this, this is the first time we've seen it since we had the study session. So in seventeen oh six oh oh five oh print A, print one, part of the criteria for review of application. Sorry, I didn't put the page down. It talks about native planning shall be retained to provide screening and avoid abrupt changes in the natural vegetative cover, extensive tree pruning and tree removal around structures shall be avoided. Which I think was and now since we didn't do all the oh, I think that I think that it says shall be allowed if needed to reduce fire hazards. Accommodate low impact clustered residential development, et cetera. I'd like a consideration since we're talking about you know, reducing vegetation and saying that it shall be allowed that that be a consideration of may be allowed. So it depends on the particular the the particular application, the particular parcel, I don't want this to look like you know, that we're giving permission as a shall to remove vegetation. It's got to be, to me, a part of the process of a particular application. You're not gonna remove
Yeah.
every tree on a parcel and say it's a fire hazards, we have to go through that. You know, it's dependent on the application.
It has to be justified essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So may I?
Sure.
So are you trying to say then shall be avoided unless needed to reduce fire hazards? Is is that the idea?
No, it's it's may be allowed. If needed to reduce fire hazards, accommodate low impact clusters, so may be allowed.
But but absent the fire hazard, et cetera, are you are you wanting it to be allowed or not? Because originally it said shall be avoided. I'm just trying to understand the intent. I'm just trying to understand the intent.
The intent was likely to have the screening that's referenced by the trees and shrubs around the home, so it blends into the environment. And, you know, I think it's in terms of what we currently have. You know, we've got buffer zones that we're supposed to have around our homes, so you know, I think we'd have to understand. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I think the original code says shall be avoided, right? But we've added all of this in here to say shall be allowed if. So you've gone from avoided to be allowed versus may be allowed where it's dependent on the particular circumstance. Maybe, yeah, maybe allowed. There's a section there that says, and this is a question. The criteria for review of application, page nine. And it says no roads or streets shall be permitted, and this kind of goes to Commissioner Newton, to traverse a major ridge. So we added major in there, whereas I think before it said ridge. But when we look, we also have things called adjacent ridges. So are we saying that you can't a road can't traverse only a major ridge? Or what about the adjacent ridges?
Yeah, I I think specifically this was trying to limit it to major ridges. We we could put.
And then how, right, but how does that then relate to how we've addressed these things? The ridgeline corridor in the past? Have we looked at just whatever a major ridge is, which we didn't have major in there? Or did we look at an application that would traverse an adjacent ridge and the impact there? So something to.
Right, I I think the whole, like as Mimi was, our Commissioner Newton was pointing out earlier, it was, it it's, it was fuzzy to begin with, and I think we were trying to clarify it with this, and maybe we just created another area of fuzziness. So I think the intent is to to probably prioritize major ridges because you probably have to put the road somewhere. But.
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe.
You know.
Yeah.
I mean, right there, you're telling us you're trying to limit the scope of what that language previously said. And as I pointed out, there's no the definition of major ridge refers to the map. The map doesn't say what a major ridge is. It just says what a ridgeline is. So we're, yeah, we're definitely compounding the confusion and ambiguity here.
So and then going on, I appreciate the fact that we're trying to incorporate dark sky lighting standards. And we've heard from members of the community that are supportive of that for Fairfax. I had a question as to where the new language came from. In here where it talks about lighting curfew, lighting trespass, color temperature. Did that come out of some other jurisdictions code? Was this kind of?
It came from Michael Dietz. So he's he's written a number of dark sky ordinances, and so he he pulled this from his library of dark sky code.
Okay, so. And again, I appreciate because I want to get to dark sky requirements for everywhere and and understanding that this is for things that are in the ridgeline corridor. We talk about color temperature in here. Outdoor lighting should be three thousand Kelvin or less, except for seasonal lighting. I don't know what seasonal lighting is, and I think that opens a lot of doors. We had somebody, I think, comment maybe at a council meeting or somewhere. I heard recently a comment about somebody that was up in the hill area and was concerned about dark sky, but also concerned about the seasonal lighting that somebody had on their property that they could see. I don't you know, if we're not ready to deal with what seasonal lighting is, then maybe we should consider not having something in there that talks about seasonal lighting.
Yeah, I I think we we could just simply strike except for seasonal lighting. That would probably be fine. This this code was probably trying to be more forgiving towards seasonal lighting to as kind of, you know, because a lot of people like to put up Christmas lights and that sort of thing, so. But that would be something that you could easily strike.
And I think the lighting curfew is something perhaps when we approach dark sky for all of the zones that we can look at, because I'm not sure about dark sky curfews in the community and how how that would work. So something to think about. On the, again, on seventeen, and I'm gonna go through all three of these, seventeen oh seven two. The hill area residential development overlay zone section seventeen oh seven two oh six oh. Referral to planning commission. And the existing code states projects requiring a hill area residential development permit shall be reviewed by the planning commission prior to being referred. I think if we're taking the time to make changes and corrections and things like changing defined to prescribed, that we should take this opportunity to fix that and figure out what that meant or how it should be now. Because it's where, yeah. And it'll be one less thing we have to deal with next year. Questions on clustered development. And we had some information tonight about where staff thinks that this is a fit. But the way the draft is written, it does speak to, you know, things over an acre, I think. And I had the same question that I had last time about using that formula. How do you come up with something using the formula that is more than the base density? And when we talk in here that this does the density, if we did clustered, should not exceed the general plan maximum for the site. What does that mean? And the reason I ask that is we have, like UR seven, right? That is one dwelling unit per seven acres. And we just had a property that was on your map on Barker that came before us. That was UR seven, that was nine acres on there. And I think at the time when we looked at the formula, it would have provided more units than what the the base density is, if you're saying that base density is one dwelling unit for seven acres. And I went back to the housing element. Housing element sites inventory table that was in the housing element. And a little confused because we've got that one property that I just spoke of that was on here, that is identified as UR seven, and then it says it's ten acres per dwelling unit. And has maximum density allowed ten, but it's a UR seven. You've got a couple properties, parcels on here that are identified as UR seven, but are really in identified as UR ten. So I just wanted to be clear. And there's a maximum density allowed, there's units per acre and that's you've got two columns with the same heading, but I just want to be clear on when we talk about clustered housing within the code, even though you say that realistically, there might only be a few areas where this would work. What are we determining is that underlying density? Is it the underlying density where I can say UR seven is one dwelling unit per seven acres? You know, and keeping in mind with, you know, we could do ADUs and JDUs, but the underlying density there would be one dwelling unit per seven acres. Is that what we're looking at? So if it's UR ten, it's one, again, not considering ADUs and JDUs.
Right.
UR ten would be one dwelling unit per ten acres.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do have new information since the study session and, I mean, I'll I mean, we we could almost restrict the cluster zoning option to the RS six. With, since, since I think based on Andrew's analysis, it would have no value in the UR seven or UR ten. So we could probably just simply limit.
I mean, that may, you know, if that's what you're looking at.
Yeah.
It may be a clarification versus going through all this where we're talking about, you know, greater than one acre and we've identified, you know, UR sevens and UR tens and all of this, it might be.
Yeah, and it would.
Bring it down to where you think it it.
And it might not address all the community concerns, but some of the community concerns we've heard have been in the UR ten and UR seven areas. And since this really has no relationship or impact on those, we may as well just focus it where it could have the most value.
I think it's helpful to clarify that it's the zoning that controls what the base density is. What's in the housing element is just a is a projection, but it doesn't establish a control or or a regulation. I I will say that what was done in the housing element was a preliminary calculation. We didn't follow the formula exactly. And so what we have done subsequent to the study session is actually confirm how many units you can get on those sites. And as a result of that, we found that you basically you could only get one in many of those districts that that Jeff was talking about. However, overall, the project, the projected number that's in the housing element matches with what our refined calculations were done. It's 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 pretty close. Is that helpful?
But again, when you talk about community and and looking at the housing element, right? And seeing those tables that are in there and then having the clustered housing piece and looking at anything over like an acre, which I think is in there somewhere. You know, we want to have this. You know.
Consistent messaging.
Yeah, so the, you know, for the community. And emergency access, so that's on page eighteen, it's number five. It refers, and there was a little discussion on this earlier, refers to two means of emergency access. But what it doesn't tell me, and that's on the clustered. I think it's, you know, it was addressing for public safety, right, to refers to two means of emergency access. So to me, you're looking at two means of emergency access for public safety, be they're fire, police. But what we're not addressing there is two methods of ingress and egress. So if we're building, and I know we'll get into this when we get down to the safety element, where there's a requirement in there to identify areas that don't have two ways to get in and out. Should we not address that with these as well if we're going to look at the potential for a clustered housing? Do we not want to consider that that clustered housing, that we make sure that they have two ways of in and out? Or, yeah. I mean, and I don't know, you've looked at, you know, the potential for these, so I don't know if that's a fit for the sites that you're looking at, but I want to make sure that if we're clustering housing and we're kind of doing a little new development there, that we make sure that we don't add to the constraints we have in the community already.
Yeah, I I think we we could substitute ingress and egress to make it for access, yeah. I think that would be a good change. I I think then, and and the Ross Valley Fire would be supportive of, you know, more access, the better, so.
Two ways of ingress and egress is more standard language than access. So if we use the phrase ingress and egress instead of the word access, that would be.
Right, as long as we understand that that's not only for public safety agencies, but we want to make sure that
People can use it.
The people can.
If there's an emergency, yes.
And then I think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna, on the open space, the required permanent open space, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's public access, correct? It's just, it's just undeveloped pieces of the parcel.
Right.
Right.
And as I explained earlier, I mean, it it could, it could have a public access easement on it because there are a lot of trails that kind of snake through Fairfax that are that people are using now. And those could be like, instead of being informal trails, they could be formalized with an easement.
Right, I mean, there is maximum flexibility in there when you talk about, you know, the different ways that you could ensure the open space, whether it's an easement or however we could, we can do that. So it's it's parcel dependent. So things, if we had a parcel that had trails on it, then that would be something we could look at specific to that parcel.
Right. And then I think it could work the other way, too. I mean, there could be an an open space area where you where you don't want it accessible because you had maybe there's a, there's a, you know, a nesting site or some sort of critter that you're trying to, or plant that you're trying to protect and then.
Then we have sites in the town that
Yeah.
have protected plants. And then parking. So it it spoke to one guest parking space shall be provided per five units. And then it also talked about those potentially being on the roadway. So my question is, why are we limiting guest parking for a cluster development to one per five units? And do we want to consider something other than that or just going with the parking code? I went and looked at that. And there is the potential for an exception And there is the potential for an exception. For specific zones, I think. PDD, RMP and SF, so maybe those are some, you know, the multifamily. Units, but I. Don't necessarily want to restrict. Parking to one guest spot per five units, considering. The amount of cars we have, considering our constricted roadways. I would like. Some other approach to that.
So I, are you. Just, so are you stating a preference just to maybe just go with our current parking standards and not try to invent something new here? I mean, is.
I think potentially, I think. You know, it could probably be something that when you looked at clustered. Developments, it seems that there is a lot of. Flexibility. Given to the planning commission. With this, that it could be something that is looked at. Per a clustered. Development. Outside of what our regular parking.
So, so you could potentially. Have a. This could be rewritten so that you're. Implementing the existing parking standards, but it would allow the planning commission to give a little bit of flexibility. To accommodate a cluster housing development if it, if it helps make the project fit more on the project site, is that the idea?
I think so, and, and that way you can also take into consideration the public safety. Elements like adding more cars on a roadway and that type of thing. I mean, there seems to be a lot of. Flexibility for the planning commission to address these. To begin with, you might as well. Do that versus limiting it. Specifically from the get go. Just a thought, and that was a question as to why we came up with the one per. Five units, I didn't know where that came from. And I don't, I didn't mean to get into the discussion aspect, but it was just a question as to why we identified one. Guest parking space. And addressed it even as on the roadway. For five units, how that came about.
I think this is one of those cases where it was just. Almost independent of the existing parking ordinance, it was kind of. Seen as a way, because parking tends to be a constraint on development, so that. This was seen as a way to kind of collect the parking spaces in one location. And so if you have like a, a cluster of homes, then maybe you could put all of the guest parking on one spot versus spreading it out on each individual lot. I think that was the intent, whether it got executed well here or not, I don't know, but.
Yeah, and, and I think. To me, there's a consideration for putting that. Guest parking on the roadway.
Yeah.
So a roadway leading up to a potential clustered development is going to be impacted. So I think. Thought of having the flexibility per development. So that you minimize. The impact. To the rest of the community or the roadways is a thought. I think those were my questions. So anyone else have, before I go out to public comment, have more questions?
If I may, just one quick response to something that I believe I heard. I really appreciate the, and I, I share the desire for the dark, dark sky ordinances. But on that topic. I think it would be a misunderstanding to remove the exclusion for seasonal lighting. Specifically in a meeting on December 14th, I think it's. The reason why it's there is that we can have Christmas trees. I think it's. Misinterpretation to not allow that. But maybe I misunderstood.
But I think, and, and, and maybe we'll save that. Let's save that maybe for the discussion piece, yeah.
Sure, sorry, yes.
No, 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 that's okay, that's okay.
Chair Swift. May I ask? A couple more questions that. I had overlooked. And thank you for your comments because they reminded me of. This one, so in 1772100. There is a. Paragraph that, the paragraph B looks like it has a typo. It's unclear. I don't think the planning commission could change the location of lots. Unless we are doing some sort of. Lots split action anyway, so I just think there might be a. Some typo or something in that one. And the emergency access language comes up again at the end of that paragraph B, this is on. Let's see, page 21. And so if you're going to change emergency access. To include the ingress egress concept, I think we just want to. Look throughout the, the language to make sure you pick it up. And then the paragraph C, I don't understand. And I was hoping somebody could explain it to me. Failure of the planning commission to act on the application. Within 180 days constitutes denial. Unless a continuation is agreed to by the planning commission and applicant or. An application shall be deemed approved under state law for failure to comply with required timeframes for approval, so I'm. Well, unclear, are we, would it be denied if we didn't act within 180 days? Or is it deemed approved under specific state laws? I'm not really clear on what's going on there.
You know, I think I might act, ask the city attorney to respond to this one. Cause I believe that the first part of that sentence was originally. Written to comply with state streamlining laws. And I'm. Not sure what the last part of that sentence is, is trying to do, so.
Yeah, I, I think we need to look at that because I think that is confusing and not. I think it's two different concepts that have gotten mixed up in the same sentence.
I, I think we will have to go back and, and do our research and figure out why that second part of that, of C was added.
Right.
Because the first part was, has clearly been in there for a while. And that sort of makes sense due to permit streamlining law, but I'm not sure, there might be some new state law that prompted that second part. Or it may need to be a D. Of some sort.
Well, they're, they're two different, they're two different concepts.
Yeah. I think we could probably assume that we're striking it for now unless we figure out we need to add it.
Yeah, we'll fix it.
Thank you.
So any more questions for staff before I open it up for public comment? All right, this is the time for a public comment. In this item. You have three minutes each.
Thank you, Commissioner. Applying your hillside zoning where you take 75% of the land is a taking. You may not be sued today because it's not ripe. As soon as someone wants to develop and does not want to give up 75% of their land, you will be sued, it will be ripe. If someone tries to sell their property and the sale falls through because of your zoning, they will sue. This entire issue could be avoided if instead you offered an in lieu of development expediting process for the land. Then it would be a choice not subject to a taking as the council is pushed. Absent this conversation is also a liability that Commissioner Pfeffer brought up. For the town maintenance of cutting roads, which is also precluded in your current language into the area for the purpose of fire mitigation. Add this to a concentration of cars from this cluster development, all clustered in one small area. Such a clustering will impede all safety access for fire and ambulance service. Addressing again the traffic or the parking concern. One example that I want to cite again are the two lots on Forest Avenue totaling a half an acre zone for 10 units. They are listed in your table B, the single slope is 63 degrees. Barbara Kohler took Scott Hostrosser to discuss building feasibility on a lots. Scott explained that acquiring and then building would never pencil out. Barbara then suggests the town, town could gift the property to a workforce housing company to make it more affordable to build. That'd be a nice gift of a town asset. My assumption is this, if Barbara could take the time to go to Forest Avenue and look at the parcels, why didn't she? Or the town take the time to notify all the people adversely affected? If each bedroom had only one person in one car, you're still jamming 10 plus cars clustered in one little area on a constricted subpar road. Was consideration given to the life or the risk of all life for all the people on Forest Avenue? Why are you supporting these 10 units there? How can people on forest escape a raging fire? How will an ambulance or fire truck reach any house on forest when people are frantically trying to flee? This might be another example of trying to hurt my property, the Marin County Country Club. Please recall, I offered to buy these parcels, build pedestrian bicycle and wheelchair safety path down to my property. My idea will save people, the current zoning could be their death sentence. You again brought up in your current language about protecting preexisting paths. There is a preexisting path on that property that's been utilized for years. What I don't know about the profit that's being derived from this process and the unbridled building. But the language here that's even been discussed tonight, although it's clarification for some, and I do appreciate some of the comments made. It's opened up other areas for subjective. And when you have a subjective as opposed to an objective design, it brings forth a question interpretation as well as potential liabilities. Specific to what I heard tonight too, is the subjective, which is going to be subject to challenge. Development capacity does not make sense when you're looking at, for instance, Forest Avenue again. Because in your own definition, at a point five and 63 degree slope. You also went on to say the change states to honor trails and again, forest property, as I've explained, has a well-used public trail. So I would like to see. Interpretation of your own laws and a further modification of these rules and language to exclude the parcel on Forest Avenue. I think it's really a detriment to the town and to the risk of everybody's health. And last, when you're talking about egress from two sides, if you tear up that road or throw that additional parcel, parking. You have an impasse, therefore you will have a single access, single egress, especially if you cut off that path. That people have used come down to the utility easement on the edge of my property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening all, Frank Agar from Cascades. The housing element. Mistakenly missed lists many of the previously saved. Public and private open space parcels as available for cluster hillside development. It took over 50 years of careful planning. Litigation, initiatives, referendums and referendums to keep what brought many of us here to Fairfax in the first place. Michael just mentioned 10 units on Forest Avenue. I took the lead when we purchased that two parcels, those two parcels on Forest Avenue, we purchased them for public open space. That was in the late 60s, early 70s, probably late 60s. We had talked about. The zoning of the Marin County Country Club is possibly commercial recreation. And the purchase of those two parcels would have provided two things, one, open space, because it was very steep, straight up and down. And number two, access into the Marin County Country Club for the public if there was going to be some type of a recreation area there. What's interesting is Deat and Basia never included in their DPEIR that the Sir Francis Drake Broadway, Blinnis. Road corridors would now be riddled with developments of 20 to 60 units per acre. For HOB dash, HO, WHO dash B and WHO dash A parcels. They would allow clustered. Multi-million dollar mansions in the up and residential zoned areas and Hillary parcels to save open space, but the problem is. They're, they're talking about saving the open space that we saved decades ago, it's already been saved. Fairfax. Fairfax is historic landslides just ignored in this whole process. That's what brought Ted Smith and the State Division of Mines and Jodges to Fairfax. He lived here, they rented a house for him, he lived here for one year, mapped the entire town, street by street, parcel by parcel. And then in 1973, we hired Wals McCard Robertson Todd, which was considered the foremost open space planning. Consulting firm in the United States. They were interested in coming to California because of the coastal commission that had just been voted in. And I happened to make a connection with him as a coastal commissioner. And, and had contact with them and they came to Fairfax and took a look at what was going on, they wanted to come into Marin County and so. Fairfax was the first town that they became involved in, and they prepared our open space settlement based on Ted Smith's mapping. The, there were eight maps prepared by Wals McCard Robertson Todds, and they were in the safe, down safe, the walking safe when I left the mayor's job in 19. And I'm sorry, 2005, and right now, no one seems to know what happened to those maps, there were large maps, probably three feet by. Three feet of three feet by four feet, large maps that we put on the walls around here. The reason we were so conscious about hillside development is because of the landslides and I, and I reported to, to the town council. My response to their final EIR, I listed where all the landslides were, I mean, landslides blew through houses, we lost houses down to the creek, we lost houses everywhere. Let me see if I can catch up with this here, it's, oh, some of the properties. For, for 40 to 60 units, the commercial areas between Harry's Hill and Fitzpatrick Heating and Plumbing. The former gas station west of the bicycle museum, Fairfax Garage, Fairfax Square here on Blinnis Road, Fairfax Rich Laundry. The now closed Bank of American Project, School Street Plaza. Now for the 20 to 40 acre. Per acre, the Arizona Jehovah's Witnesses five acre property of Sir Francis Drake. A portion of the Fairfax Hills open space parcel that runs the old Shell Quarry west of 711. There's not sufficient flat land out of the public right of way that could even handle. 20 units. Tannely Mar Road backs on a Fairfax Creek, it's got a historical Victorian house, one of the oldest houses in Fairfax, we ignore that. The commercial properties along the side of Sir Francis Drake down by the Car Wash, the Old Timer Club, Poncho Vias. There's historical properties down there, those that are, the, the, the lodge is, was the, the old timer club, it was, it was a restaurant years ago. And behind that is an old historic livery stable. And, and we're ignoring the history of Fairfax, some of the oldest properties and homes at Fairfax. So I, you know, I urge you to, to, to really look closely at this, I, I wouldn't jump into this and, and pass it tonight. I take some time and take a look at all of those parcels that they've listed. The, the, when we signed that settlement agreement with Fairfax Hills. It was really clear, I was in a closed session, I was in open session, I was in closed sessions, I was in a courtroom. And I know exactly what that settlement was about, and it was mandated, mandated on us by the courts. The judge just died earlier this year, not many of us left who remember all, all that whole story, but. The idea of using some of that open space to develop what up to 34 units is just, it's just crazy for, for Fairfax, why are we doing this? There's no reason to, the town attorney is wrong when she says it's no longer a valid settlement. There's no reason to. The town attorney is wrong when she says it's no longer a valid settlement. The, the Upland Residential Zone, the wall property, if you, if you modify the residential zone tonight, recommended modification and, and allow clustered development. The wall property, the town has said, oh, it's not included, but the wall property is zone Upland Residential 10. It's not been excluded legally from, from any amendment of the Upland Residential Zone. So if, if it's wall property is not purchased for open space and, and the town has amended, you are ten to allow clustered development. We've just raised the price of the value of that property, and it's going to be developed by some private developer if we can't come through and purchase it for open space. But just please use as much caution as you can tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. I want to compliment this planning commission for actually paying attention and letting people speak. It's uncommon in other town of Fairfax meetings. So once again, this is very refreshing and it's nice to be here in front of you in a calm, attentive meeting environment. Frank Agar and Michael McIntosh brought up significant things with the limited time to discuss this. They apply to the draft EIR and the housing element too, and I've made those comments previously. I want to reiterate that I don't think you should be rubber stamping these things, and there's a lot of problems with what's being approved. And a lot of this town is going to be developed because of this. Might not be tomorrow, but you're paving the way for huge changes. And I don't think that it should be done this way. So related to tonight, the elephant in the room that I think needs to be clearly addressed is what Frank Agar just brought up. Is this clustered hillside development, I would like a clear denial from everybody here involved. Is this clustered hillside development going to allow in any way for a development of the wall property if it were to be purchased as open space or otherwise in a more significant way than has ever been talked about before? Is money going to be used to purchase the wall property as open space? And are these very complicated, many maneuvers going to allow a loophole where we are going to be told that, wow, there was a public meeting, you had a chance to speak, and oh, wow, we didn't understand this? I think it's your duty, if money is to be raised for the wall property, that you can clearly state that there will be no development on any of the four or however many parcels it was originally. 100 acres. There have been multiple comments and meetings that seem to indicate that this might be the case. People have been hoodwinked before at the last Sky Ranch property purchase where they donated money and they were assured that the equestrian facility would be maintained, but they now blame maneuvers at the county level for it not being maintained. So I think that's the key thing that I want to get to. But I'll name a couple of other things. I don't think you can take action, and I urge you not to tonight because of Commissioner comments, Mimi's comments, Commissioner Swift's comments, because the amendment that we were given here in public that other people were not able to see online, that there seems to be a lot of things that need to be worked out. The Director of Planning has indicated there's a site with 10 units, but it hasn't been named tonight. What site is that, that clustered housing would be allowed 10 units on? That, that needs to be answered publicly. One moment here. Okay, another thing too that needs to be explained if we're talking about the wall property and clustered hillside development is why the town would now be seeking to raise $2.3 million when the buyer owner didn't have that much into it. Open space should be worth less than developable property. He was looking to develop 10 homes on it. Now the town's looking to pay 2.3 million for something that he paid somewhere plus or minus a million dollars, depending on how the math's done. How would it suddenly be worth $2.3 million unless you were going to do development on it? That needs to be explained to the public. Something doesn't make sense here. All right, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Thank you.
Good evening. Christie Delman, Oak Manor Drive. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I'm going to speak on behalf of a heritage oak tree at the top of Oak Manor on the west side. It can't speak. I'm going to speak for it. As well as the red-shouldered hawk that lives there. I'm going to speak on behalf of my neighbors who have a ridgeline view from their homes, two homes that have been purchased within the last three years that are looking straight across to open space and the oak tree. They bought their homes with the intention and with the awareness that that was never to be developed, designated open space. I'm really concerned with what I've heard this evening, which sounds to be a very, very raw document with some very significant unanswered questions. We can't clearly define what a scenic roadway is, what a ridge line is. Is it a ridge line from Oak Manor? Is it a ridge line from Sir Francis Drake? Is it a ridge line from the homes that look up to an open space at this point and an open ridge line? We haven't answered those questions. We do have 10 designated units somewhere that no one has defined. Are they the 615 parcel? With all the computer modeling that we have, I cannot understand why we can't absolutely visualize these key elements within our community that make this be the quaint town that most of us came here for. I can't imagine with the technology that's available that we can't visualize exactly what is being put forth to us as community members. Not with overlay two-dimensional maps, but 3D imaging. It's available, and I challenge us to know exactly what these changes are going to look like. Ingress and egress, sorry. You tell me if there's two ways in and out of Oak Manor Drive. I wrote about it in the EIR about the horrific traffic that is on Oak Manor, particularly at school time. We haven't really even addressed the traffic that comes through from Sir Francis Drake from the valley. You can't even get out of Glen Drive. And we're looking at adding additional houses farther and farther away from the spine of the traffic corridor. I'd like to see our town really think about what does a dark sky protection mean? And not just some arbitrary from somewhere. I'd like to see cross-references of the true value and where those parameters come from. What does it mean to maintain a dark spot, sky? So, and at no point has it been clearly defined if access to the Smith Ranch Fire Road will be maintained if 10 homes somehow show up on a really steep hill. So, yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of the tree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Mallory Guideman, Fairfax. I was going to start with what Todd started with, and it's really wonderful to get heard and listened to. This feels so sane to me after other meetings. And I, I hope you don't approve this for everybody's reasons for people that during a fire or some other catastrophe can't get out and will be stuck in their cars. And you guys have to think about what, what might have happened had you not done this? And how they would have existed. I think this is very dangerous. I don't think these hill, hilltops can hold any of this. And I know I'm repeating what everybody said, plus I didn't think about the tree, but, and the tree. So I still very much want to thank you for how you're running this meeting. I really appreciate it. Appreciate you guys, and I hope you make the right choice. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mark Lewamersky, live in Oak Manor. There was a planning commission meeting that was supposed to discuss the public comments, and that was canceled. That was on November 16th. I don't know if any of you actually read through all the public comments or had the time to read through the public comments, but there was numerous comments from people in Snowden Lane and in Oak Manor regarding the 615 Oak Manor or the 615 property and the settlement, the Fairfax Hills settlement. So given that all the Snowden, Arrowood and existing 615 Oak Manor Drive property owners have the 1991 Fairfax Hills Settlement Agreement on their deeds, there was a tentative map that was approved per court settlement order that was in 1991. All the planning commissions, over the years, repeatedly used 1991 settlement definitions for housing site envelope, appearance of the house, maximum square footage, and ultimately the land outside the envelope, the building site envelope, would be dedicated as private open space with no further subdivision. There were earlier orders granting writ of administrative mandamus in 1989 and 1990, but those were both superseded by this final 1991 agreement. The town council, in written correspondence to a Snowden owner, was citing 1989 provisions, which was two years prior to the settlement agreement. Before the public, before the planning commission rubber stamps the town council opinion as valid, you should consider the opposing view of the previously mentioned owners, Snowden, Arrowood and 615. Jack Judkins, Vice Chair of Fairfax Open Space, made a very reasonable request for an adequate independent evaluation assessment be made regarding the settlement. I think that request is in the public, or that request is in the public comments. I think that's a very prudent way to take a look at this settlement, decide whether it's valid, and, and I urge you not to approve these zoning changes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we have a few hands on Zoom. The first is John and Jane. Please go ahead.
Hello, Planning Commission, can you hear me?
We can, we can.
Okay, good evening. I just have a few comments about this change. And the first one is, it's kind of a funny little thing, but in the document, the ordinance, there's a decimal point between the section symbol and the title number. I don't know if that should be there or not. And then the second thing I would like to point out is that I, I agree with Commission Member Newton about the definitions. And, you know, I, I read a lot of regulations and definitions are definitive. And so if there's ambiguity in a definition, it does not help the user of that definition. So if I'm a zoning person and I decide I need to look at that definition, it's nice if there's not ambiguity there. So I would encourage you to maybe review that section. The second point I would like to make is under section 17.060.050, criteria for review of application, section or paragraph A, and then section one under paragraph A, where it says native plantings shall be retained to provide screening and avoid abrupt changes in the natural vegetation cover. And then it says, this is the important sentence, it says extensive tree pruning and tree removal around structures shall be, the new wording is allowed. So what, what in fact this is allowing is extensive tree pruning, if needed, to reduce fire hazards. Well, fire hazards are undefined. So what a, a person could do is say, well, we have extensive trees and we want to remove them, and it's based on a fire hazard, which is undefined here. So perhaps that could be reworded if you're now allowing extensive tree removal and a pruing, excuse me, a removal and pruning that somehow extensive is defined and/or the fire hazard is defined. I would also add that perhaps in this section, you could add wording that would be subject to approval of the Tree Committee. So that it's not a carte blanche, well, it says it here in the zoning code and we can just remove all these trees because it says so because of this undefined fire hazard. And so, and I'm not speaking as a member of the Tree Committee, but I am a member of the Tree Committee. And I will say that, you know, oftentimes we have some issues with the claim of a fire hazard as a, as a reason for removing trees. So this would be helpful if this was kind of sorted out at this level. And let's see, what else? Anything else? Oh, yeah, another thing. I noticed there's lots of substantive changes in this ordinance, and there's not a whole lot of reasons why. And so, you know, as an example, on the state level, when they make changes to the building code, they give a statement of reasons for each code section. So what they would do is go through each code section and, and explain why they're changing that particular section. And, and, you know, if we want to get to a granular, granular level, the public does have an opportunity to respond to those changes. So what I'm seeing here is there's a whole lot of changes and there, there's a lot of line items, a lot of lines and underlines and added things, but there's no real, real reason for them, like given to the public. And the only opportunity to address them is through this kind of short, you know, public hearing. So I don't know if it's kind of like that horse has left the barn, so to speak, but maybe, maybe this is the wrong venue to, you know, have a requirement for that. But it would be nice to have, you know, a statement of reasons. to have, you know, a statement of reasons of like, you know, why each of these sections were changed. Anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next we have Pamela. Pamela, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, want to thank the planning commissioners. I was a planning commissioner there for nine years, so I know the hard work that you do. I'm also the founder of the Fairfax Open Space in 2004. And my gut, I'm sick, so I don't sound so well, but, um, I've listened to all of the comments. I really appreciate your comments from the commission and I support all of the comments from the public. Um, I have a few things that stand out to me. Uh, the first one was one of the commissioners brought up about the deed restriction on the 75% to keep the site for open space. Um, that is a weak statement and is vague. I mean, you, you need to have something in order, otherwise anything could happen. Um, and that was my other question is if you have this particular density, I mean, is it, can you build beyond that density with a use permit? I didn't hear any discussion about that. And then the second one is about a const, about conservation easements, which I learned recently. I'm on the Sierra Club Executive Committee and some of the towns are trying to, um, take their open space and use it for our new Rena numbers. And without a conservation easement, it is not locked up. And that open space can be taken or however they do to create housing on it. Um, and I really agree with Mimi about the visuals. Mimi was, uh, with me when we did the general plan for about 10 years. And those visuals are so important. They're, they're just incredible. It gives you that whole idea of what are you, what are you putting on down on paper? So I would really have, if you go back, get those maps. I mean, it's incredible now what you can do with visual mapping, et cetera. Um, and, uh, Cindy, your idea about dark skies is, is yes, it's new, but it's becoming more and more, uh, known and I appreciate you bringing that up. Also, for any homes built, uh, slopes go up, there, the windows can create a glare. And so there's different ways you can actually, uh, create the way you build, build the building to not create those, those glares, which as you're driving, et cetera. Um, and let's see, I think it might be down there. Um, so yeah, and you know, um, it will change Fairfax on this document. I mean, I, I, I understand, uh, the pain in it and, you know, that was why I felt that, uh, Fairfax needed an open space, uh, committee and with Jonathan Braun's help from San and Selmo, I pulled it together. It took four years to get that committee up and running and it is amazing group of volunteers who are working hard and we have a big thing coming up with the law property. So, um, right now I think that's all I have to say, you know, and making changes on open space i- is a big deal. So I would ask you pull back and regroup with a lot of these comments. I think they're very helpful to make it a, a better and, and resourceful document. Thank you.
Thank you.
And up, up next we have Kathy. Kathy, please go ahead and unmute and talk. Kathy, go ahead. That is your turn. Kathy, we cannot hear you. I just want to be sure that you're unmuted and go ahead. I'm afraid we can't hear Kathy and I have no other hands raised.
Okay, um, then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Thinking time. Um, maybe the first thing is what the role is of this amendment, right? The, um, the reason that we're adding the clustered, uh, um, the clustered housing element is so that some of the properties that are, um, indicated in the housing element as possible developable are actually physically possible developable because otherwise it can't or it would be unfeasible. And then they cannot be counted towards the Rena numbers because it is not feasible. So there's that link. Um, doing a clustered housing versus a spread out doesn't change the number of houses. It doesn't make a higher density. It is the same zoning that's underlying. It's just a trick so that it becomes possible. So as a general concept, if that is correct what I'm stating, as a general concept, um, it's a good thing if you've tried to achieve some housing that is going to be possible in locations that are suitable. Um, a lot of the concerns that I hear, including from public comments are not, are not pointed at that role of what it's trying to do. Those are other things that are, um, that are perceived to be part of that. Um, that's where my thinking is. I'm going to leave it there for a second and see if there's other commissioners want to jump in.
Maybe I should have asked this question from staff, uh, earlier in the evening. I still don't understand why the clustered development section of our code is within the Hill Area Residential section. Can't they build somewhere else?
No, it is specifically applies to the Hill area, to, to these sections that involve hillsides and steep slopes. Because the, the idea is you're trying to protect those resources. You're trying to prevent, um, people from carving up large parcels into large parcels and putting a home on each with roads winding through the hills and, uh, causing excessive grading. So the, the whole idea is you're trying to concentrate the development on the flatter portions of the site, which is less intrusive to the natural hillside environment. So the, so it's kind of a, you know, it's, it's a private sector way of protecting the hillside. It's because you're allowing the same number of units to be built, but in a smaller area, smaller footprint area.
Yeah, I totally understand that, that we're trying to protect the hillside. That's great. I, I applaud that, um, intent. But I still don't understand why we wouldn't let someone build that type of housing development on right on Sir Francis Drake.
Yeah, it's a good point. That's not what's, um, in front of you though. It's, we're just talking about, um, amending the hillside regulations at this point. But that could be considered, um, at a different time. In fact, we may be talking about that a little bit more, um, when we get to the workforce housing overlay study session. Cause that's where we're talking about some of the, some of those sites that are along for Sir Francis Drake.
Yeah, I think, so I, I raised this question, you know, a month ago. And I guess I still don't understand why this wouldn't just be pulled out and be its own separate section that would be applied universally rather than just at the hillsides. Um, it seems odd to me and its placement and how it will be used. Um, so I'll just leave that comment.
Yeah.
Um, there, I, I have a couple more comments. Um, because it's in front of us, I feel like I can, I can bring this up again and I, I brought it up, um, more notionally last time, but I'm going to bring it up again. Um, in reading through our, um, hillside residential, um, code, I see a lot of terminology about property lots, building lots, land, projects, et cetera, that are, um, I think could be better, uh, termed in their use. And, uh, I think that it can, if we are more specific about what, how we use those words, and I'm going to give you some examples. Um, we would also, um, foster a development to be, uh, placed on flatland rather than on the hill. And I, I'll use this as a, a example of some just local folks I know here in town that just wanted to do some work on their own house. And they have a flag lot where 60% of their lot is flat, flat, flat. But then there's a piece of it that goes up the hill that they'll never build on. It's tiny. It's 15 feet wide. Uh, but that piece of their lot, um, throws them into this category. And so just to do a little addition on their house, they are thrown into having to do a lot more work to show that, um, they're not going to disturb the hillside, basically. Um, and I think that that can be applied on most of our hillside lots. Um, and there's a lot of folks that are built on stilt houses and I don't think that's what I'm talking about here. I'm talking about places where there are a variation in their lots. I think we're, uh, putting undue burden on folks that already have property here. And also, um, if we, rather than judging the entire lot that's to be developed on, uh, and we just defined it as the project area. Um, I think we would get a lot more initiative to, for developers to find a project area that is flat rather than an entire lot, which is not. Um, so just as an example, if we looked at, uh, the applicability seventeen point oh seven two point oh two oh. If we were to change the first sentence, which says properties zoned RS six, RS seven, five, et cetera, et cetera. Um, fall into the HRD overlay zone and if they have any of the following characteristics. So to me that says property, it's the whole property, no matter how big it is, how small it is. If, for instance, that flag lot that I use as an example, you have to use that entire property to judge whether or not it's on a, it's the, the project is steep, even if the project is a small garage on the flat part of their land. Um, or if it's a developer that wants to come in and build a clustered development, if they say, hey, our project area is just this piece in the corner of this big area property and it's flat. I don't want to have to spend the extra fees to survey the whole hillside because my project area is right here next to the road and it's flat. So in either of those cases, I think that if we said rather than property zoned, project areas in these particular zones, I think, um, it would serve both development opportunities in our community better. Um, it wouldn't penalize exist, folks with existing projects in there, you know, trying to add a garage or an extra bedroom, et cetera, in their project. And it would also lend itself, I think, in this larger discussion that we're talking about tonight, um, to encourage development on flatland. And, um, generally where things in this, just this one section seventeen oh seven two, this is where it really defines what projects would be subject to the HRD overlay zone. And I think that if we typically change the word property to project area just within this one section of the code, it would allow that.
That it?
Yeah.
Um, well, appreciate, I don't know whose, whose comments to jump off of first. I, I think it, because it's more of a technical question, I really like the, um, intention in the, in the theme of Commissioner Kelly's comments on the flat area and just looking at it while you were talking. You know, my reading and understanding of the applicability sections or this defining the zones overall makes sense in that you don't know until the project actually comes, whether or not this whole thing would be applicable to it. Um, whereas the issue here is whether or not they have to go through all the procedures. And it seems like that element, this section is where you carve it out, say, development permit required, and then you have just another thing under that says, except where project area, you have that definition. I think I'm not trying to, to rewrite this section now, I think, but the point is that I think there's a, a, a fairly targeted way that we can ha, amend this section in general, I'm not saying specifically tonight to, to, to really address that question. I think it's a good, a good, a good point. Um, be, you know, because the purpose of this is to, to, to address issues with developing hillside and, and sloped, um, parts of, uh, uh, of an overall town, not even, you know, even the lot lines are arbitrary for, for that sort of natural resource issue. So, um, why, why are we focusing on the lot line instead of the project area, um, get that? Um, to follow up on the point that Commissioner Jensen started with, which I just want to talk through quickly before going to a few more specific questions as it relates to public comments and sort of what we're doing here. I appreciate all these comments being made and I understand that some of them were made at the town council meeting or at other elements in the housing element process. And just want to talk about it a bit more to explain my view in that this specific agenda item for the town council is whether or not to make these specific amendments to the zoning section. And so as it relates to what specific properties are going to be developed or not, I don't think in this context, or really in any context, when you're doing zoning as part of a code for the overall town, you should target or focus specifically on what's happening to one specific project. Because I think ultimately when those projects are going to be developed or not, they've got to come up and show that they meet the requirements independently. And we want the zoning code that can sort of be applied objectively to any parcel. If somebody buys a bunch of these, um, and, you know, um, applies to have the parcels merged and then later subdivides them into different sections. You know, we can't anticipate that and I don't think we should make amendments to a zoning code and, and focus on a zoning code with a specific parcel in mind. I think it should be what makes sense, sort of a not completely abstract, but more removed from any specific project. Um, for just a technical point on, um, Michael Mc, one of Michael McIntosh's comments on the, um, clustered housing vis a vis fire risk. It was my understanding, reading the staff report, and so just wanted to highlight it, that it's the opinion of the, um, of Ross Valley Fire, that clustering homes is an advantage to them in terms of fire risk because to get people out to make sure lives and property are safe, they're going to a much smaller area. If all the homes are clustered in one part of the property, they're only going to that area and only need to get that area rather than being split out. That, that's my understanding of the reason, but, but in any event, I, I generally would, would defer to the opinion of Ross Valley Fire as it's stated in the staff report. Um, You know what I just spoke about, I guess, sort of relates both to the concerns we heard about Force Avenue, and I think it's. The, the, the six fifteen property that, that has a settlement issue and question that, and you know. Getting your voice heard in general in, in municipal matters. Difficult, so I appreciate anyone taking the time to find any forum they can to. State their concerns. I just feel sort of at a loss here is that it's not really. Something that. Is in front of us, what's in front of us is this amendment, it's not whether or not a project is going to be developed on a specific parcel, it's whether or not. If somebody is doing clustered housing, do they need to have dark sky compliant lighting? Do they need to have a vegetation management plan, things like that? You know, eh, to the extent, though, that these amendments are being viewed to make some development on ridge lines or near ridge lines in hillside areas more likely because it would not be economically feasible or realistic to build on a bigger property. If you couldn't have a cluster zone, um, and, and is the risk of, of encouraging development that way, I think. My view ultimately is that. Each project is still going to have to come up and show that they're not destroying the natural resources one by one as they come to the town for permits to, to develop and to build and to get whatever. Variances or, or, or waivers of, of application to the section they need from the planning commission. I think. We've got to assume that all of these processes that we're setting out here are going to be followed. And I think that the, that what we are setting out is sort of adequately protecting the town. With a, with a couple of notes that I'll. Mention on a, when, when I'm getting into more specifics separately. And then I guess the other more general. Point I wanted to make. In light of public comments. Is the idea of this does not necessarily feel finished, there's comments about defined terms don't really work or, um, you know, we're noting that there's edits, it still seems a little bit in flux. There's things that we want to clarify that everybody agrees or are not clear in the maps. And you know, two, two points there. First. We're not making the amendments. Right, there's still. It is necessarily a draft in the process, it's going to be edited because what's before us is whether or not to approve, to recommend. That the town council approve. These amendments, because they're the ones changing the code, not us, we're just. Weighing in as the planning commission. So to the extent that it may seem odd to approve something where we're saying some of the language is unclear, I think the idea is that what we're approving is a recommendation to the town that they adopt these amendments, not necessarily. Word for word verbatim, because they are also entitled as the elected officials to make further clarifications and changes. And frankly, you know, I personally think code changes and, and that sort of legislative. Action. Should be in the hands of people who are elected, um, as opposed to, um, who apply and, and get appointed. For better or worse, and that's what the, the process of the elections is for and. The, the second point on that is just, you got to think about. And what I think about is what's the alternative? Because we've also said that we are still relying on this visual resources map that is unclear whether or not we make the amendments. We talked about, you know, some of the changes we're making are to clarify things because we thought they were unclear. In our discussion, we're saying that they're still unclear. But if we didn't make the changes, they would also still be unclear. It's not, it's not necessarily an improved situation to have the existing language that. Um, is unclear and doesn't include a lot of the. Amendments needed, um, in light of the housing element that was adopted as stated in resolutions. But also some of the clarifications that we do make, which are helpful and don't need to be edited further. I think. We want to be in a position where. If somebody comes to the town and wants to. Do a low impact cluster development, we can point to all of the language in here and say. Sure, this is going to be a long process, you can get started now and look at this. We may, as this, as the ordinance says, the visual resources map is what you see in the general plan with other things that the town. Adds to it and, and just for that map, I assume the reason we keep relying on the map, even though we say that there are other maps is because it's what's in the general plan and we can't change that until the general plan gets changed. At which point maybe this is something for everybody's lives to, to, to include, so. You know, I think that's, that's sort of my overall explanation in, in, in light of public comment of why I think it's appropriate to. Take some action tonight, whether or not each individual. Planning commissioner thinks that these should be recommended to the council, why I think. It could be appropriate to make that recommendation. If anybody else has any, any other general comments, you know, I'm happy to, to pause and then get into my, because I've been talking for a while, specific language issues that I think. Uh, merit discussion.
Well, I think that's. The point we're at about that, but let me, um, let me go to Commissioner Newton and then I'll do my comments.
Thank you, um, I agree with my fellow commissioners on so much, I, oh, you said what I was going to say, but. I agree that the overall purpose behind what we're doing tonight is not only for. Hopefully preservation of open space and, uh, protection of the ridge lines. And for the purposes of fire safety and community protection. And, you know, clustered development is in, you know, the open space element that we uh, included in the general plan back in twenty ten. And, um. You know. I, we've heard that there, there might be something that carries going. I, I do want to clarify something I heard during our question session, which was that. We may not need to apply this to the UR. Uh, seven and UR ten zones, did I hear that right?
I, I think I, I stated that just because for, we did some analysis and for all intents and purposes, the cluster zoning option does very little in those zones because the parcels are just simply not big enough. Um, if you have a minimum lot size requirement of ten acres or a minimum lot size requirement of seven acres, for example, you would have to have a either a twenty acre parcel to split it in half or a fourteen acre parcel to split it in half. And we simply just do not have parcels that are that large in town, so it has no practical use in those zones.
Can't hear you, Commissioner Newton.
All right, well, that's good because I would be in favor and that would leave the RS. Zones and the other ones listed in the, uh. Header of the section. Maybe you can remind me which zones it would then apply to. Just the RS.
I, I think just based on the analysis, it was, um, RS six, but I, I don't know if we, I mean, there may be other ways to assemble parcels, I don't know. I mean, maybe I'd leave that for Andrew if he thinks it would have any benefit beyond RS six.
Um, I would, I would have to double check this spreadsheet, I think there might have been one in, um, UR ten, but, uh. Um, predominantly in the RS six.
Well, that is important. Uh, and I would love to know the answer because.
Right now.
If it's the wall property and you are ten, is that? Possibility there, because that one is, uh, clearly. Upgrade community interest.
UR seven. There's a possibility, UR seven, yes.
Yeah, it's UR six and UR seven, so kind of the, the zones that allow smaller parcels in general is where it'd benefit, but. I think the wall part, the wall properties was taken out of our inventory because of the, the, um. The change in circumstance.
Can you clarify that? You just said UR six and UR seven, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, I meant RS six and RS seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, also in terms of some of the public comment we heard about. Preservation of open space, one of the things that I think. Uh, has worked against the town in terms of protecting open space was not having open space zoned as open space. I think we have very little land in town actually zoned as open space. And, um, I'm wondering whether or not. The, uh, requirement to preserve land would also potentially include rezoning it.
Oh, that's a little bit beyond the scope of what we're proposing tonight, because we, there would be a new zoning district. Which we don't currently have available to us in the code. Uh, the current strategy that's expressed is to put in place conservation easements or other ways to permanently preserve the open space without actually rezoning it.
Okay, I'd like to, in the future, I'd like to hear more about that because, uh. I'm interested in how we can utilize that zoning. Uh, in the town more, um, so. Also, one of the other questions that came up was. Um, relating to the tree ordinance and doesn't the tree ordinance kind of apply everywhere to everybody? Including the town in Fairfax? And we wish PG&E would figure that out too, right?
That is correct.
So where. It says you could approve extensive pruning and tree removal. Uh, that would of course be subject to the, uh. Approval of tree committee, et cetera. I am definitely in favor of. Clearer language to protect the ridges and, uh. At the risk of. Making the language in our current ordinance less protective with these changes that are being proposed, I would. Like to. Keep the major out of that one line about the ridge, even though the ridge isn't a defined term.
I mean, maybe, uh. Can I break in there a little bit? Because I think you had a good idea earlier, um, that I don't want to get lost. You, you, we could create some sort of connection to the, what you referred to as the red lines on the OS one map.
Well, those are what is referred to as the ridge line.
Right.
On the OS one map.
Right, so I, I think we could probably take another closer look at this and try to make the connection to between the definitions and those, um, red lines.
Just keep in mind, though, that with a prior planning director. We had months on that discussion of how to do that, so I think to Commissioner, and we didn't do it. I think, um, because of the difficulties, I think to Commissioner Newton's point that it may be. Better to delete the major out of that, just leave it as it, as it is for now. Versus going to the red line down that rabbit hole.
I, I definitely tend to agree with Chair Swift about that and, um.
May I jump in on this one, Commissioner Newton? The, I, I believe the, what is called the major red lines, the major ridge lines is the red line. It's just semantics. So the, the code amendment states ridge lines and major ridge lines. But the map only shows one ridge line, which is the red line, but that's my interpretation. So I think the solution is very simple, actually.
Well. It's complicated because all those terms and that definitions and now reference terms. Refer to each other, and so they don't really mean the same thing. Although they refer to a map that doesn't even, you know, I mean, it's a little weird. I'm just saying, um. The, uh, the other thing, the other point, the last point I wanted to make, and I'm sorry, I just take that back is, uh. You know, I, we are where we are, you know, the town council has taken action and we're at a point where we're looking at a proposed ordinance that we would, uh, recommend or not recommend to the town council and, uh, frankly, I am, uh. Happy to recommend. This ordinance with the, uh, careful. Reflection of our staff on both our discussion uh, this evening, as well as the public comments and the public input in uh, crafting something that they should, uh, be able to prevent, present to the town council. All right, I'll stop there.
Okay, so I'm going to jump in here. To the. I think to Commissioner Newton's, um, earlier comment about, um. If somebody's. Submitting an application in the ridge line that. The language talks about providing photographs and all of that and, um. I would like that, I think that's important for the applicant to do that. I think that, you know, somebody made the comment that, um, each planning commissioner can go to all the spots that you're supposed to be able to view this from and make their own determination, I think, you know. I think, um, it's better to have the applicant provide. The documentation, um, and then we, we look at that. To. Commissioner Kelly's comment, um, about changing. The focus to just the flat area of a project. I think that's something that's kind of outside of the scope of the discussion for tonight. I think it's, it's a bigger discussion we could do. Next year to address that, if there's ways to do that, I think looking at. You know, a parcel that may be ninety percent flat, but have ten percent of a hill behind, still has, um, things that need to be looked at, I think. As a whole, we've seen that when we look at projects like on Wood Lane where we've had the back area that have had, um, slides and they were going to. Build on the flat area, but if you were just looking at that, you wouldn't be looking at the parcel as a whole. And, um, the potential with that parcel and what you need to do. But I think that overall is a bigger discussion. Add it to the list for, for next year, um. I think to Commissioner Pfeffer's comments that. It seemed like you were saying that we shouldn't be making or recommending. or recommending changes to the, um, language that we have before us. I think this is very much the place to try and make those, um, recommended changes, um, for staff to take forward. Um, Commissioner Jansen had wanted a discussion on the dark sky piece of this. So, um, you know, and that, those elements, but and we can do that maybe as I go down some of the things that I captured as far as, as changes that I, um, that we talked about and things that I'd like to see changed before it goes to, um, the council in, in, in the reso and, and for discussions. So we talked about um, having the zones, the specific zones that the clustered housing would apply to. I think, I think that's good. And, and if staff agrees, you know, that we have that and we limit it to those zones where it's applicable for now. And I think that helps, um, with the community comfort in doing clustered housing and not having any zones identified for it specifically when we look at, you know, that earlier map that we had and that map we had, um, when we did the October workshop on this and we had the map and we were trying to figure out why some of those parcels were there to begin with. Um, so I think changing this and just identifying the specific zones now that this would apply to would be good. Um, I would like, we talked about the parking. I would like to go back to, um, referencing our parking code section, knowing that it seems like the planning commission has the um, ability to make changes per application that comes to us. We seem to have a lot of flexibility here, which is great. Um, I'd like to see the emergency access changed to the egress, two ways egress and ingress. So it applies to both the, the, um, residents as well. Um, and one of, uh, the public comments related to like the tree committee and mentioned seventeen oh six oh five oh per N A, per N one about changing that to maybe allowed.
Chair Swift, if I could jump in on that one specifically?
Let me, yeah. Um, and then to the comments about the ridge line, I agree with, um, just taking out the word major and leaving it you know, as, as we've addressed it in general with our ridge line, the way it is now. Um, so those were the changes. I think that would be great to have in there to go to the council. And then, um, there was the issue of the dark sky. So I, I'd be curious to hear what you wanted to say about that. Um, cause I think some of it is a little odd.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I would be an advocate for a global dark sky ordinance. Um, hopefully we can start in Fairfax. Um, but within the context of this, I think the language that's currently put in here comes from that ordinance. Um, and it's maybe not complete, but it is important because specifically in a hillside area, um, glare would be really obnoxious and bad for, for wildlife around there. So it's good that a part of that language makes it in here. Um, for now, that's best. Maybe next year we'll bring back a ordinance townwide. Um, but I think there was during discussing the language that's in there, I think there was a misunderstanding. Um, seasonal lights are Christmas lights and they by their very nature are physically not dark sky compliant because they wouldn't sparkle. But I think that's why the exception is for. So you, you are not allowed to create any glare except if you put up Christmas lights and um, I think we want to keep that. That was my, that was my comment. Um, and it's just a very small detail, fair, nothing else. And I completely, I think we're all in agreement that dark sky ordinance would be a good thing. Um, that's it.
For sure, Pfeffer.
Yep. Um, two points. So first on the dark sky, you know, someone moved here from a city. I thought, oh, I'm going to live in Fairfax. I can get into astro photography or something. And little did I know it's not nowhere near close to dark enough, uh, as is. So, uh, you know, I'm very much in favor of, uh, of anything we can do to strengthen that. Um, to Commissioners Jansen's point on whether or not it should say, except for seasonal lighting, this came up in my earlier question of, you know, how is the lighting curfew enforced? And I think eh, when this would come up is if two neighbors are disputing, you have Christmas lights up, you're not dark sky compliant and who, who should have the burden of saying that the town should to, should take an action on their behalf. And I think, I, I think it's appropriate to say, if you have seasonal lighting up, it should be on the other person to say that it's a too obnoxious, too bright, it's March and you still have the like light show that's keyed off of a song. Um, and
I won't tell you that I still have Christmas decorations up in the house from last year. I haven't taken out. Now I don't have to put them back up again.
Um,
You see, I thought this meant that my autumnal lighting display was seasonal or my spring lighting display is seasonal.
And I get
you know, and I don't think we want to reserve it for a particular religious holiday. You know, we're Fairfax. I mean, we've got a lot of religious uh, holidays. So seasonal could be winter, spring, summer, fall. I say delete it.
Well, then, then the default is that whomever has the seasonal lighting display has to show that the, that they shouldn't, that, that it's either as dark sky compliant or that there shouldn't be some sort of code compliance enforcement against them. Uh, which is why, you know, maybe see, I think seasonal is the best way to get in. Yeah. I often get very, um, pedantic about the, that the point of a menorah, for example, is to be in a window facing the street so that everybody in the town can see the lights and the candles. That's where it's supposed to be. I, I personally don't like, uh, when people in my family try to put them inside away from windows. Um, but, but so I think there needs to be some sort of exception so that the default is that these sorts of things are reasonable. And if somebody wants them to come down because despite the fact that it's some sort of seasonal lighting display, it, they're not dark sky compliant and they shouldn't be up. I think that it's on the person who's saying they shouldn't be up to say why.
I think the better way would be just to delete the seasonal piece and then look to amending it or changing it. You know, down the road, I think it, it, having it in there kind of opens up a bag of worms, if you will, where if you didn't have it in there, it might not be an issue or you could address it later is my thought on that.
I mean, I guess, I don't know how many three thousand Kelvins is, and I'd love to hear from my neighbors at the end of, uh, Mono Ave who do a fabulous holiday display. And how many, how many Kelvins is that?
It opens the color. So it's like a burnt orange as opposed to the higher the number gets, the more blue it gets. Not, and not bright. How, how does this seasonal business, um, affect the peace, uh, lights? Cause I, I kind of like the peace lights. Are they, are they seasonal or not seasonal? Yeah, dark sky.
All right. We're getting very deep here.
Yeah.
If you're talking, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. My bad. Um, perhaps we just delete the seasonal reference for now. We can always address that when we look at um, dark sky, you know, applicable throughout the town. And to your point about coming here and thinking you were going to be able to see the stars, you go over in the valley and you get as even San Geronimo, you have a lot better view up there. So, um, yeah.
Uh, could, could you just, since you seem to be on, not everyone's together on this. Could you like take a poll so that staff knows uh, which way we're supposed to go on this? It's not clear to me.
Okay. So how many want to delete the seasonal, um, part of this and we can address it next year?
I want to be more complicated. Just one last time, I just want to say, you know how we recommend that the staff consider when making a change, I think poll, I whichever, you know, is, uh, I can go either way, but I would want direction of whomever in town is in charge of code compliance or enforcement, whichever would make their life easier. If, if they want to deal with people complaining, saying, I have a seasonal light and this person is telling me to turn it off if it's there or not, whether or not it's, it's because ultimately you're not going to go to every, like you said, there's, I used to like the peace sign on the hill and frust struck off of Balinas, um, things like that. You're not going to every single one. Um, and so eh, when getting, what would you rather get a complaint about? I think staff should be able to weigh in on that for the, for the council in terms of administrative burdens.
Keep it the way it is.
Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Newton?
I said delete it if you want to ask, uh, whether it's more complicated to have language gone versus the vague and undefined language that we have in this proposal and get the, you know, code enforcers opinion. I wouldn't object to that either.
I think the term seasonal is odd and I think we should delete it for that reason.
Okay, delete it. Anything else as far as discussion or changes otherwise?
Yeah.
Emotion?
On the, well, just on the tree pruning thing to the, to the caller's comment about sort of the perspective changing from um, extensive, uh, pruning, uh, being avoided to being allowed rather than just changing the shall to a may, I thought we could change it to say extensive tree pruning uh, and tree removal around structures shall be, and step back in avoided, but may be allowed if there is a, and to the point of just somebody claiming fire hazards all the time to the tree committee. But may be allowed if there is a demonstrated need to reduce fire hazards, accommodate, uh, low impact cluster residential standards, et cetera. That, just the
How about the rest of you? Do you want to go with that? Or do you want to go with just the may allow or?
You know, the fire department has standards for clearing around houses. Uh, no shrubs or bushes or trees or limbs or anything within, um, five feet.
Yeah, of a house. But that's different than the other part of that where somebody may be taking out a lot of trees. And we've had that discussion, um, with the fire department, with planning to go over those things and tree committee members, um, that there's still a tree committee requirement in town that when, um, the fire inspector looks at things or they look at the vegetation management plan, those go to the, the tree committee if there's, they also recommend that if there isn't anything on that vegetation management plan, um, that the applicant needs to get a tree permit. So we've got that kind of in a middle ground where fire and the tree committee and all are working together on that. So it's not anymore a thing of where you can go in and just clear cut a parcel. And I understand the other part of that with the, the different zones, like the zero to five and all of that, which we look at with their annual inspections. Um, uh, you know, I would just leave it as you know, the may allow kind of thing and just kind of go from there. I think sometimes less is more as far as the language.
Okay. Um, and, but unfortunate, unfortunately for, I apologize to the, to my colleagues. Um, the town attorney's comments reminded me of one more point I had, I had flagged in the emergency access section in oh seven oh two, where it says, um, existing fire roads providing access to open spaces areas shall be retained and maintained if this is determined necessary by the fire department. I recall on one of the projects, there was a discussion about the fire department sort of shifting and not wanting to necessarily make opinions about needs. Um, I, in some sort of, uh, I forget the specific of the project, but I thought this would give us the flexibility that we and they need. And I should, don't imagine it would be that much of a, of a headache for the parcel owner if it said, um, if requested by the fire department instead of, you know, what, what's, there's no guidelines for what when can a fire department determine it's necessary? Do they have to invent what's required for them to decide that it's necessary for an existing fire road to remain open?
Well, and I guess I'd question what we're terming a fire road. So we have fire roads like Hoyon, there's a, you know, there's a fire road up there. So there's kind of identified fire roads. So I'm not sure kind of the reference to the fire road. Um, we don't normally use those for evacuation or anything else. They're there for, and we're doing a shaded fuel break along one of them.
Yeah, I'm just, just at least in this instance, just it's already in the section. And so it says, they get to keep fire roads if they determine it's necessary. And since we're not telling them on what basis they can determine that an existing fire road is necessary, we should at least let them just request the fire road remain open instead of invent some standard to, to, to determine.
Does staff have some background on why they address fire roads in this?
It was just a, a general, um, you know, fire roads are, are good. We need to protect them. I don't, I don't think it went any deeper than that. So, yeah. Yeah.
Anything else?
I have a very complete list. Two pages. So.
So are we?
Before you get to a motion, if that's where you're going, I have one change to the resolution. And I have a, a comment about a code provision that I need to call your attention to. I don't mean to jump the gun, but just let me know before you get there. So on resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-seven, I would like to add in another whereas clause. You can put it down at the end, right before now, therefore. There is mention of sequoia in the ordinance, but I'd like to also see it in the resolution. It's reso twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven. The one that goes with this ordinance. Anywhere, I want a whereas clause added to the resolution. Yeah. And it's just about SEQA. Even though the SEQA is listed in the ordinance, I'd like to say whereas adoption of this ordinance is consistent with the EIR prepared in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, for the recently adopted housing element. So that language is in staff report, it's in ordinance, but I just think we should put it in the reso as well. And then I want to point out that recommendations to the council on zoning code amendments need, in order to be an affirmative recommendation, they need a two thirds vote of the body, which is five. Anything less than that is a negative recommendation. So if you had a four one, it would be a negative recommendation. Just wanted to point that out.
So are we ready for a motion on this? Do you want me to attempt to make the, the motion?
I can move it. I will.
Thank you, Commissioner Newton.
For the Planning Commission to adopt resolution number twenty-two twenty-three thirty-seven, resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission recommending town council adopt an ordinance, amending title seventeen zoning of the Fairfax municipal code to update the following chapter, seventeen point oh sixty ridge line development, seventeen point oh seventy-two hill area residential development overlay zone, and seventeen point one twenty-four UR upland residential zone to implement the general plan housing element.
As amended and with all recommendations.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Hey, can we have a vote?
Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Beford?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi, motion passes. Thank you all. Can we take a small break? Oh, let's take a five minute break.
Recording stopped.
Okay, are we about ready? All right.
Recording in progress.
Let's have our next item, staff report. Planning Director?
I'm going to turn the microphone over to Andrew Hill to give the staff report on the workforce housing overlay. And this is a study session. So it's, so we hope to get some valuable input tonight, and then we will take that input, and then we will use that to revise the code and then bring it back to a public hearing in January.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah. So the, the purpose, the, this portion of the meeting is a study session. We're not asking for a formal recommendation, but the objectives would be to introduce the workforce housing overlay and related standards and get feedback from you tonight ahead of formal meetings in the new year. So let me start with some background then on the, on the workforce housing overlay, including its purpose and need. The workforce housing overlay is needed to implement the housing element. Under state law, the town is required to put in place zoning sufficient to meet its capacity for lower income households. And the state law also identifies certain special requirements for the suitability of sites identified to accommodate lower income arena, including size parameters. They shouldn't be smaller than half an acre, shouldn't be larger than 10 acres. They should be free of environmental constraints, have proximity to transit and the availability of utilities. Well, in Fairfax, there's very few sites that meet those criteria. But the best candidates are generally located in the town center area and along Sir Francis Drake. And so the workforce housing overlay establishes adequate zoning for housing at densities that would be deemed affordable for lower income households. And so we started by identifying a universe of candidate sites. That list was narrowed on the basis of property owner input. And the standards that are in draft form tonight reflect the input that we heard from speaking with property owners about specific opportunities and challenges on those sites, as well as the requirements for lower income arena sites under, under state law. So let me give you an overview of what's in the standards now. The map here shows the, 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 the list of candidate sites as windowed down based on property owner interest. It, so the overlay would apply to these identified properties, which typically have a base zoning of, that is commercial. So some of the sites are in the CH zone, some in CL, and some in CC. The workforce housing overlay does not require residential development. Rather, it gives owners the option to develop housing if they choose, whether in a mixed use format or a hundred percent residential. Equally, the, the property owners maintain the right to develop consistent with the commercial base zoning. The workforce housing overlay would establish two zones. It's closer to the core is the workforce housing overlay A zone and the outer lying sites are workforce housing overlay B. In the A zone, the maximum base density is higher. It's forty dwelling units per acre. In the, in the B zone, the outer, outer lying areas, the maximum base is twenty dwelling units per acre. Separate from that maximum base, the ordinance also introduces the concept of a, of a sliding scale where more density would be available to sites, but only in exchange for a higher commitment to affordability to help the, the town meet its arena requirements. So for example, if you're looking at this chart here, a project in the workforce housing overlay A zone that proposes to make fifteen percent of the units available to lower income households on a rental basis, well, then they would be, they, the maximum base zoning for that project would be forty dwelling units per acre. However, if the, if the project were to make twenty percent of their units affordable to, to lower income households on a rental basis, well, then their maximum base would be fifty. So you see that give and take. They get more density in exchange for a, a higher commitment to affordability. So the concept mirrors what's in state density bonus law. And then also the overlay establishes a buy right approval process. This is required under state law because sites, the sites need to be rezoned to accommodate a shortfall arena. There aren't enough sites in Fairfax today to accommodate all of Fairfax's assessed share for lower income. So rezoning is required. And because of that, the sites must also be subject to a buy right approval process. However, the overlay standards do provide a provision for review before the planning commission to confirm that the projects comply with the objective standards in the overlay. Other aspects of these standards include height and step backs. So the, the ordinance establishes a maximum building height of three stories and thirty-five feet in that zone A, whereas in the out, out, outlying zone B, the, the maximum height is two stories or up to twenty-eight point five feet. However, there, the, the overlay does provide provisions for additional height in order to permit sloped roofs to accommodate affordable housing or common open space. So in the, in the A zone, you can go up to forty-eight feet or fifty-five feet for a slope roof and four stories. In the B zone, that additional height would be up to thirty-five feet and three stories. The overlay allows provisions for elevators and stair towers to project up to 10 feet above the height limits. And there's also a provision that at least seventy-five percent of the street facing elevation of a story above thirty-five feet needs to be set back a minimum of 10 feet from the front facade. This is a bulk control, so you don't get a, a very bulky building. There's a step back requirement to, to modulate the look of the, and the, the look of the massing. In terms of parking requirements, the overlay relies on the parking requirements that are in section seventeen oh five two oh three oh of the code. And so studio apartments, you know, the, the parking requirement would be one space per studio unit, one point five spaces for one bedroom units, or three spaces for every two one bedroom units, and then two bedrooms and above required, would be required to provide two spaces. Project applicants, the, the overlay does provide provisions for project applicants to request parking reductions if they do a parking demand study that demonstrates it's warranted. And the, the overlay also allows allowances for shared parking when, when that is an option. Private and common open space, the, the overlay establishes a minimum outdoor living area that can be either private or common open space. In the workforce housing overlay A zone, that's a hundred and fifty square feet with a portion of that area required to be a private open, open space. And in the B zone, it's two hundred square feet with a percentage for, that must be private. Rooftop decks and certain landscaped areas can count towards the private and common open space requirement. And there is a provision that this, that the open space requirement can be reduced by up to twenty percent for sites that are within a quarter mile walking distance of an existing park. And then finally, separate from the overlay, there are also some text amendments to the base commercial zones that are required for consistency with the recent California appellate court decision called Martinez versus Clovis. The court in this case ruled that when an overlay is used, the minimum density for the underlying base zone must be at least twenty dwelling units per acre, if the overlay sites are to be counted towards lower income arena. And so that is what we're doing here in Fairfax. And so there's, we need to make sure that residential uses are, currently under, under current base zoning, residential uses are permitted conditionally or in the, in the CH, CL, and CC zoning districts, but there's no minimum density specified. And so for compliance with this recent decision, a zoning text amendment is needed to establish an appropriate minimum density if residential uses are going to be proposed in the CH, CL, CL, and CC zoning districts. And so that text amendment is being proposed. It's in your packet tonight as well. And the reason is for compliance with this recent Martinez versus Clovis decision. And this was an issue that, it's a, it's a recent decision, and it's something that HCD highlighted in their comment letter on the, on the draft element. So that's where that came from. So that's a quick overview of, of what's in the overlay, just pointing out the next steps. Tonight is our, our study session. We plan to listen to your feedback tonight and incorporate any recommended refinements to bring it back to you on January eleventh for a hearing. And then after that, it would go to council first reading at the end of January and, and then second reading of the ordinance, February seventh, at the regularly scheduled council meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions first before the others. So we call this workforce housing. So what are the requirements when we call something workforce housing? And I just wanted to be clear for this because we, as a community, have gone through other projects that the assumptions were not valid. So workforce housing, not a requirement to work in town, not a requirement to work in the county, correct?
That's correct. There's, there's no requirement. I think that the term workforce is not clearly defined in state law. But it's, we chose the name workforce housing because it's meant to be representative of who this housing is typically going to be for. It's a port, because of the, the inclusionary requirements that, that the town has adopted, you know, a certain percentage of these units will need to be available to moderate and lower income households. So lower income households are those that make less than eighty percent of the countywide income. And, and there you, we can, and I think we did in the, in the housing element, draw a link to certain professions, you know, that fall into that category. And so those, those tend to be workforce. And so that's why, that's where this is, this is coming up. It's creating more opportunities for, for people who work in Fairfax and surrounding Marin County communities.
Right. And to be clear, you don't even have to be employed. I mean, it's just denser housing with income restrictions.
Some of it is income restricted, yes.
Okay. Do these, and since we're looking at our commercial areas, do these have to be mixed use projects?
They do not have to be mixed use. So it, it, there's, there's multiple options here, right? It's an overlay. So any property owner can continue to develop with a purely commercial project consistent with the base zoning. That's an option. The overlay gives them the, the option if they choose to do residential. And that residential could be in a mixed use format, or it could be in a hundred percent residential format.
So, and to that point, a parcel owner or a business owner could theoretically demolish their business and just build housing. Is that correct?
That is.
With this process?
That is.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have right now. Anyone else? Commissioner Jansen?
So the, there is a map that identifies the, the properties that are currently under consideration. I, is that map created based on interest that the owners expressed?
Yes.
So if an owner is currently not on the map, but he would like to be there two years from now, is there a procedure for that to make possible?
Yeah, absolutely. They can apply to have the, the overlay applied to their site. So it would be a rezoning.
So they would go to the planning director and they would ask for that to be applied?
Yep. Yeah. And typically how that would work is they, they would potentially apply for the rezone at the same time they applied for their project. So kind of have them go together. We wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily have to do it that way, but if they wanted to make the process a little faster, that's how they could do it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Second question. So there was a chart for the heights. The first thing, that's a question, and then, and then an additional question to that. But so the, what triggers, what, what, what do you need to comply with to go from thirty-five to forty-eight feet total height?
Um, there, I don't have that. Let me just look at that.
The, I mean, there's a note in here, but the note just tells you you can do it. But I presume there's a condition there. I'm looking at, so this will be page thirteen. That's, you have your table, it says, and then your maximum building height, thirty-five, see note four. On the next page, there is a footnote four, additional height and blah, blah, blah is allowed, but it doesn't tell you why.
Right. And so are you looking, if you look, for example, at table seventeen point one two six dash A, is that what you're looking at in the note?
Yes.
Note four.
Yeah.
And so it, it says, to accommodate ground floor retail and, and restaurant space with high ceilings, and for affordable for sale or rental housing above the minimum required, and to enable slope roofs and common, and common open space for.
Maybe I'm not looking at the same. Seventeen dot one twenty-six dash A.
Yes, and note number four.
Right. Oh, I see.
It's a long sentence, but the. It's a long sentence, but the rationale is at the end.
So you can do it on top of retail?
Because the retail would have a higher floor plate, for example.
Yeah.
Or if there was some concession needed for for sale affordable.
Okay, so then to follow up the second part of that question. And so actually, so it's forty eight plus a potential ten for some components. But it's actually fifty five plus ten plus some components if you read the text here. But can you identify a structure in Fairfax that is fifty eight feet? It would be your forty eight plus your ten overrun for your elevator tower.
Not sure if anything that tall exists today. No.
No, we do not have anything that tall.
Okay.
So I think probably the tallest structure in town would be three stories.
Three stories, great. Right. Okay. Those were the questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, I I'm trying to find that part about the height restrictions and the third and fourth floor potential here, which just seems really really out of character with, you know, what we fought so hard for in terms of preserving visually distinctive areas in the general plan. So I'm just wondering the extent to which we can continue to limit the opportunity for third and fourth stories here in Fairfax.
Well, I think a partial answer to that question is this is an alternative to a density bonus project, which is allowed per state law. So under the density bonus, if they were to provide the affordable housing, then one of the exceptions that they could request would be an increase in height. So they they may be able to obtain this. A typical developer may be able to obtain this height anyway through density bonus. So this is just a different pathway, which we have a little bit more control over. And I don't know, Andrew, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, but. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think I would just I would just add there's sort of an economic imperative to keep the buildings shorter to to or lower when you when you get up to five stories, for example, or above, there's it becomes a different construction type. There's elevators, there's circulation, there's fire hazard provisions in the California Building Code that add significant cost. So there's an incentive from a financial perspective for developers to to keep the buildings at, you know, three or four stories, just because it's more cost efficient to build. So as Jeff said, there's provision, if if somebody comes forward with a state density bonus project, they're going to they're going to be able to get waivers and concessions on height. But, you know, there's there is an economic imperative to to try to to limit the heights for cost control.
I thought I thought one of the reasons we might want to adopt our own ordinance would be to identify those bonuses that would be appropriate for the town as opposed to and and I think we've had discussions over the years about what types of density bonus bonuses we would prefer to see than things like height limitations, which are, you know, part of the whole general plans focus on visual resources in the town. You know, so I'm just really curious about why we've got, you know, if we have an opportunity to focus the overlay, you know, and the bonuses that might come from not having an ordinance and and think about what we'd like to see. You know, height exceedances to this extent would be like way down on my list. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? I have one if nobody else has them, but go ahead.
Uh, maybe just a follow up because we are doing numbers. So if you under state law, if you would get a height variance, that's a percentage over what is zoned, right? I think currently Fairfax is twenty eight point five feet high. If you were to get a density bonus from the state, then you can get one additional story, is that correct? So you go to thirty eight. You don't go, you you won't meet forty eight.
Well, I think the way that it works is that you are able to, in the density bonus, you're able to get additional number of units as a percentage. So if under conventional zoning, you can get twenty dwelling units per acre, and then you're you provide the affordable housing units, like low income or very low income or whatever the category is, then there's a percentage that's assigned as a density bonus. Let's say that allows you to get fifty dwelling units per acre, then they could ask for a concession that would allow them to get that density. So it's not doesn't really specify a specific add a story. It just says what concession does this developer need in order to obtain that density?
Okay. Thank you.
Let me let me go ahead and ask my one question. Sorry, you brought up the map and the identified parcels on the map that were where owners had expressed an interest. So and in the staff report, it says the overlay will apply to select properties in the CL, CH, and CC zones. So what does it really apply to? Is it, does it apply to anyone in the CL, CH, CC zones that come in and ask for it? So it's not just select properties. What's in here are the ones that have expressed an interest, correct?
Yes, and that's that's what select means, the ones shown on the map.
Right.
Essentially, right now. But it is true that if in the future, an owner who has not to date expressed interest, but changes his mind or would like to be added, they could request a rezoning and and to be added.
Because any zoning change isn't going to say this applies to the select properties. It's going to be based on an area. So it's and that's what I'm trying to get at. So this applies to anything. I'm asking anything in the CH, CC, and CL zones, correct?
What I would say is any property in the CH, CL, or CC zone is eligible. But the ordinance itself identifies by APN which parcels are currently in it, and it also includes it shows them on a map. And so you're not in the overlay zone until you're shown on the map and your APN is written into the ordinance. But any of those commercially zoned properties could are eligible and could make that request.
And then we would change zoning again?
Yes, they would have they would have to be rezoned. And the ordinance will be updated to include them.
Because we also have commercial property, one commercial property I can think of that's in the resid residential area. So it's not, you know, when we look at CL, CH, CS, it's not just the Drake Center Broadway corridor. So that's why I was asking, you know, select versus any of those commercial zones are theoretically eligible to apply.
Uh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Okay, so what I was asking was basically we're looking at the commercial zones for this.
Yes.
So any property, any parcel that is in any commercial zone of those CS, CH, and CL are eligible to apply for this.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Pepper.
Yep. My question was just going to be if there is you know, something to think about before we get into our discussion for it comes back in a more formal way than the study session. Is there a way to identify in the staff report or in the exhibit more clearly what portions of this language are, you know, we're using the magic words from state law to match that versus this is what Fairfax is considering under its own thing? And, you know, just to focus our discussion and consideration of are we changing this? Can we change this number or is this number what state law says we have to use? But we can decide it should be used on properties X and Y or just sort of that element because it's hard to 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 go through all of this and say, hey, I think this would be better for our town. Get back, well, yes, it would be, but state law says that if we don't have this, they get to do it anyway. First, you know, so then our energy can really be focused on on doing the best we can to deal with state law while making this work.
Yeah, I think there is a way to do that. There's the it's quite complex. There's a lot of state laws and different circumstances trigger different requirements. But I think we can more systematically go through what those are and which of the because not all of those requirements require all of the the parcels that are identified currently in the in the zone, but we can more systematically go through and explain that for you.
Yeah, and I think just in, you know, what I've seen for some other ordinances that are adopted, if if it's even deflag, like, these are the sections that vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Somebody else already did the work and said, we actually changed this and that, but we still have the definition as applied by state law here to just sort of know what other jurisdictions are considering and changing. I know this says it largely conforms to what's going on in the rest of Marin County. If we can know what sections vary from San Rafael to San Anselmo versus, you know, unincorporated Marin County, I think that also helps us consider where Fairfax should fit in in that mix.
And that's a good point because that gets to mandatory versus local control and we want and and it's good to know the differences. So thank you for that. Any other questions or comments for staff? Whoops.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, you know, traditionally in towns and cities, we've had different zoning, residential and commercial or industrial in order to sort of protect communities from what was going on environmentally often in the cities. And, you know, folks who wound up being, you know, exposed to more contaminants were those who couldn't afford to move out of, you know, the commercial centers. And you know, while I appreciate us working to try to make more affordable housing available in our town, I want us to also think about ensuring that people who are living next door to commercial spaces and in close proximity to commercial spaces are afforded attention in terms of the potential for, you know, disruptions of life because you're living next to a bar or a dry cleaners or I don't even know, you know, but it's just because, you know, the gas stations, I mean, oh, but you know, I just want us to be cognizant of not creating more problems for the folks who would need more affordable housing in our town. And I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about is performance standards, right? Noise, noise and emissions. I think we can. I I understand what you're going where you're going where you're going with that.
But that would be performance standards for commercial properties that aren't a part of this. So conceivably, you're putting housing in an area that would be next to a commercial property. So the performance standards wouldn't be on the commercial property that they're next to.
Well, yeah, and you're you're right. The performance standards would apply for new commercial uses, but they wouldn't necessarily be retroactive to existing.
Go ahead.
I think we have to watch out that we don't get rid of the work for the workers' housing. Right? I'm very concerned that we're putting, we're letting housing fill up our commercial zones. And I actually think that, you know, our most vibrant cities are cities that have a strong mix and that we are, you know, integrating housing and commercial, et cetera. If we replace those lots that are commercial lots, we're never going to get commercial spaces back, right? You're never going to let the commercial spaces sort of filter out into the residential neighborhoods, right? It's not going to happen. So we got, I think we have to be very careful that we don't just fill up our central core with housing.
I think one thing that I didn't incorporate into the presentation tonight that now I'm realizing probably would have been helpful is we did an appendix to the housing element where we went site by site and provided photos and, you know, and data about existing conditions. And so perhaps for the next time, we'll incorporate that into the into the presentation just to give people a flavor for what what's on these sites now. And you will see that they are pretty heavily underutilized. So it's not that we've selected sites that are, you know, that have a, you know, a viable vibrant business on them now. It's that we really tried to identify the best candidates for redevelopment. So I think that maybe speaks to your concern a little bit.
Yeah, I also want to just make sure that it does get on the record that I actually did a little survey here as we were discussing visual survey as it is. But I don't think there's a single building in Fairfax that's over three stories that I could find. I have a pretty good mental recollection of most of the bigger buildings, and I just did a quick look, and there's nothing that I can find that's over forty feet or so until you get all the way down to the hub. And so we just, I want to put that out there for context.
There's something I don't understand. It goes back to the beginning. If state density bonus law allows a developer to up what he can put on a property, then the developer can always do that. So the additional amendment that we're here proposing either would provide less, in which case he would go back to the state density bonus, or it would provide more. And why would we want to provide more? So the question is, what's the purpose of this ordinance? What is it doing?
It's doing a couple of things. I think that one, one, when we take it back to the housing element, because that's where this is coming from. For the purpose of of a housing element, we cannot assume any state density bonus. We need to demonstrate to HCD that the 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 projected number of units on the sites is achievable without a state density bonus. And so that's one of the reasons why this is there. I think also it it is because these properties have commercial zoning, there's new laws that have come online at the beginning of this year, AB twenty eleven and SB six that essentially preempt local control. They say that even if the local zoning says it's commercial only, the state has said, no, you know, you you can build housing on these on these properties, subject to the exact objective design and development standards that Sacramento has has determined are appropriate. And and there's requirements there that if if a developer wants to proceed And, uh, and there's requirements there that if, if a developer wants to proceed under AB 2011 or SB six, they need to make, uh, they, they need to use prevailing wage. And that is, that is a big expense for, for developers to use prevailing wage. And they, so the advantage of having these, the over, doing the overlay, you know, for Fairfax doing its own overlay, it means that Fairfax provides an alternate way to get housing on commercial sites. And Fairfax can decide what standards to put in place and not have them determined by Sacramento. And then additionally, through, through the, if you develop under Fairfax's housing overlay, you don't have to use prevailing wage. And so there's a, there's an economic incentive for, for doing that.
Yeah. So if I summarize that, then the ordinance makes it easier for developers to build these tall buildings than under state law. That's the consequence of what I just heard.
Buildings over three story, buildings of three and four stories. Yes.
Okay. Interesting.
Any other questions or comments for, I mean, questions for staff? Okay, then I'm going to open this up for public comment.
Later in the evening, I can certainly miss points, but a couple of comments, I agree with Rob, just as a macro view here, why are you doing this? It appears that you're, you're, I understand that there might be a fear, what I hear from Andrew, that if you don't do this, the state can come in and provide their own rules and regulations. They can. So I don't think we should be jumping for that. We haven't lost that privilege to do this. I think Commissioner Kelly really brought forth the most important part of this. You don't want to lose your commercial property. And commercial property, a lot of it's vacant, but you don't want to throw it away now because there could be a new use in the future. An independent of what is risen built. And as Andrew's comment for like a pre-existing neighbor next door, look no further than the San Fernando quarry. Once the DUTRAs bought that property and some housing was built across San Peter Road, different coalitions and different housing groups got together because I've, I've spoken to some of those things at the board supervisors. And all of a sudden the housing group said, well, now that we've built and now that we're established, we no longer want the silica dust. We no longer want the noise. We no longer want the traffic from the trucks. And so there's all this consternation and fighting and angst between the people because there is a pre-existing business, but once the housing was allowed to come in, it didn't. So again, to Commissioner Kelly's comment, you're absolutely correct. We need to have very separate areas that are zoned for commercial and for residential and for open space. And that's what gives the town, you don't want to be a monolithic blob. You want to make sure that you have opportunities for a change in the future for a different type of business or a different type of housing. And for myself, what I feel has been absent from all these conversations, the workforce housing we're talking about or affordable housing, unless it's through big subsidized program and estates broke. So I would also question the validity that in the future. We should be looking at our smaller parcels that really can't be developed. And I think of one right off the top of my head. If you go past White Hill School, there's a very small strip and it backs up right to the creek. That small strip could never accommodate a large home, but it could very easily accommodate like a series of little mini homes or transient homes that could come in there and it would look appropriate and it wouldn't look out of place and it wouldn't look diminished like, oh, you're so poor, you're living here. You're utilizing a space, the best ability and you could still stay within your setbacks of the creek. So again, I encourage you to look at the whole thing of saying, why are you doing this? I don't think the state has given us grief yet. I think you're actually spending money for something that's unnecessary. If you do need to make an overlay, an overlay should be an overlay. It shouldn't be subjective to, well, this parcel came in at this time, but we don't want you in this parcel later on. No, it's either an overlay or it's not an overlay. And last but not least, the separation of different communities is what the basis of zoning has been for a hundred years. And it, if you guys look up the basis for all laws, when it comes to property rights, it goes back to Blackstone. And really what that came about was for customs and what we accepted as customs. And we have come to accept as customs where there's different concentrations of different types of things. And I think we should respect that. And that is truly the basis of most of our land use laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Through the chair, I realized that I left out perhaps the most important reason for doing this. If so, if I could, at an appropriate time, just tack on to my response to Commissioner.
We'll do that at the end of the public comments when we come back for discussion. Thank you.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. Hello, everybody out in the audience or who sees this at another time. I've got to ask everybody here, is Fairfax for sale? Sure seems like people are selling out. Sure seems like a lot of policies being implemented are forcing people to move. Sure seems like a lot of assumptions aren't being questioned. Do any of, well, I guess I ought to ask our expert here who's getting paid. Does Mr. Hill from Diet and Basha or our planning director have an answer? Or our lawyer have an answer to how many housing bills got passed in this last year? And how many are still in effect from a year or two before? This is a rapidly changing landscape. And there will be many legal challenges to these bills. If you react with a reptilian brain and you don't see the whole landscape and you don't think about the future, we're going to be roadkill here. Two of the commissioners I heard speak earlier made really good points. Commissioner Kelly's point about balance, that's the way I interpreted it. That was seconded by Mr. McIntosh. Commissioner, Commissioner Jansen, if I'm saying your name correctly, that we'd actually be paving the way. I've got to ask why in the tradition of Fairfax, we aren't thinking about creating more balance and what would be healthy for the town and alternative ways that we could do what the spirit of the bureaucracy that the state and its bumbling and the lawyers have created and the lobbyists have created, which we're all trying to deal with. But I think that's what our objective should be here. Not to sell Fairfax out and go, well, we had to. I really think everybody should think very hard about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair. Rick Hamer, downtown Fairfax. I'll start by just saying we should not allow a loophole for developers to seek non-provailing wage labor forces, especially when we're trying to close the gap between housing expense and the wages necessary to afford housing. So the state requires prevailing wage for a reason. And I don't think that Fairfax should take exception to that reason. And we should pay a fair living wage to the construction workers that are building this housing. A couple of points on page 11 of the red line, there's a table. The table lists the sliding scale. And if I'm to understand correctly, the reason why we're doing this is because our, our ordinances must allow for what we're claiming our arena numbers will be. We can't rely on state bonuses for that. We have to have it built in to our structure. Okay? If we take that, those numbers and if we take what's currently presented for School Street Plaza, we only have 95 units because we can't rely on the state bonuses. So where do we get 175 units? Which incidentally isn't 175, it's actually 188 because it's already 13 units on the property. Okay. Which have, which have to be added to. If we use the maximum number on that sliding scale, there's only provision for 143 total units, which include the 13 units, which means we're only adding 130. We're not adding 145 the way that's written. So this, this is something that's going to come out in the wash when someone analyzes these numbers. On page 15 of the same report, we make a reference to RM zoning. I don't think this overlay only applies to RM zoning. I think that might be an editorial, something that needs to be looked at. I think that need to be edited, edited out, edited out. It's applying to the overlay, not to RM zoning. You know, which is the current multiple, multiple family zoning that we have here. So if we could, if the commissioners could look at that and make sure that we, we don't throw in a, uh, something that's doesn't agree. Because this is what HCD is going to want to look at. They're going to want to see everything agrees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Edgar again. So the, the average income for Fairfax for a for, for low income for one person is 104,000 a year. And if you look at 80% of that, it's $83,200 a year income. In order to determine Fairfax's average income for what is low, et cetera, they average in Belvedere, Sausalito, Tiburon, Ross, San Anselmo with Fairfax. Now, I've been arguing forever that if you're going to figure what low, what, what low income is in Fairfax, take Fairfax income. And if you took Fairfax income for a single person, it's under 60,000 a year. That's what it is. And, and we should be, we should be aiming to provide the low income housing to workers who work in Fairfax who make under 60,000 a year. We talked a little about a living wage law, prevailing wage, a living wage. I wrote a living wage law for Fairfax back in, I don't know, 1999 or 2000. And it had a, it had a annual cost of living increase in it. And today I think Fairfax's living wage law is about 20, 26, $26 an hour, I think. It gets, it, it adds up each year. And it happens to be one of the highest living wages laws in California, little old Fairfax. But I know $26 an hour, how can you, you could barely live on that. I mean, wow, I don't know how you can do that. But anyway, when we, when we talk about reducing the commercial areas to provide housing, Fairfax depends on revenue, sales tax revenue. And Fairfax is one of the lower sales tax generating communities in the county. We don't, we don't make a lot of money on sales tax. And so if we're going to start reducing our, our commercial areas, we're going to make even less revenue in sales tax. The, um, I, I, I listened to the As would have 48 feet, four stories. And then in parentheses, it said 55 feet with a slope roof. And then there was a, a bonus of 10 feet as for state density bonus. So I think that's what they were, that the consultant was trying to tell us. So that means it's 58 feet. And then with a slope roof, does it go to 65 feet? That's for the As. For the Bs, it was less, but, um, when Fairfax Town Council removed the three words out of, out of the, the general plan and some of the housing, how some of the general plan and some of the, some of the elements, those three words for a small town character, they did that some, so years ago. I guess that was a telltale sign of where, where we were going. Seems everyone who comes to Fairfax wants to create something else. They, they love to move here because they like Fairfax, but the next thing you know, the town council, they're, they're making these big plans to make, to make all these changes. You know, I wonder why they really came here. If they liked it so much, why do they want to change it so much? But anyway, I, I, I'm concerned about the height and, and, and the visual impacts of the, of the height. Earlier I read the, uh, the locations and that's off this, the map that's handed out. That's where I got those locations right off the map. So I think we've got to be really cautious of, of, of the height limits here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom?
It's quite late, so we might just take a moment and remind our Zoom listeners, if you wanted to speak on this issue, now is the time to raise your hand by using the icon in the bottom center of your screen. And I see no hands raised.
Thank you. So I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for any comments or discussion. Go for it.
Much more brief this time. So, you know, thinking about to Commissioner Jansen's point about why do this if you're going to get a better deal under state density bonus law? Does that necessarily mean we have to be giving them a better deal for it to even matter? I think we can write and adopt something that is not as generous as the state density bonus law and people would still opt to do it instead of opting through the state plan. One, because it's more certain, it's in, it's in our law, it's more, it's less likely for us to challenge it. And two, it's just going to be from a business perspective, a lot more feasible to build under the program that the town says you're going to build than having to go through a state enforcement mechanism where you say the state says I get to do this, even though it doesn't meet your laws. It just seems like that's more of a hassle and that's going to be priced in to sort of the differences in what they're allowed to build. So I think we, there's room to make sure that we aren't being more, because I, I think we don't need to be more generous than the state mandates and yet can still have a plan that, that serves the needs to help us meet arena numbers and get development within reason. You know, I really appreciated Commissioner Kelly's point about not losing commercial spaces. And I think, you know, that there's going to be a theme in sort of knowing what we can and, and, and can't change ultimately when we're considering in ordinance to recommend. But where we have the flexibility in here to encourage and make sure that we are most focused on building out and encouraging mixed use developments as opposed to taking the commercially zoned properties and having them be 100% residential. You know, I, I don't necessarily think we need to have a complete segregation from commercial uses to residential uses. I think there's some industrial commercial uses, yes, shouldn't be around residential homes. But I think, you know, grocery stores, you know, just general retail shops, I think to the extent that we can encourage those commercial properties that are going to get the workforce housing overlay to zone to less hazardous mixed use developments, we should try and craft this in a way that makes, makes sure that that's what we're ending up with. And then I guess those properties wouldn't be commercially zoned. And maybe that's why it's not really reflected here. But I think Michael McIntosh made a good point about also using this sort of in overlay concept to help develop some of our funky parcels and lot sizes that are never going to get developed under our standard zoning. With Rick Hamer's comment, I agree. I, I would like this ordinance not to have a I would like this ordinance not to have a space where somebody could opt not to use a prevailing wage when otherwise they would have to under state law. I think there's no reason on that point to be more generous where we're allowing a developer to come in and not pay a prevailing wage when they would not be able to do the development otherwise. And if they opted for state law, they would have to use the prevailing wage. I don't think there's any reason to undercut our people. Where there is room to work on the income requirements for some of these bonuses, I know we're keying off of moderate and lower income here. And I know workforce housing, while we cite teachers and these other jobs, is it's, the properties don't actually have to go to people in those areas. But to Frank Edgar's point on what the actual income is in Fairfax, I also don't think it's important to highlight what the actual income is for teachers. And so I pulled up the 2022-2023 Ross Valley School District salary schedule. You could be a teacher with forty-five semester credits beyond your bachelor's degree and have twenty-two years of experience and still not be making ninety thousand dollars a year on the salary schedule. I think most of the scout, I mean, the schedule starts at roughly sixty thousand dollars, which is below the maximum amount. This is from the housing element that HUD has for the extremely low-income category. So there's teachers here who are in the very, or if they're a single person in the very low category or in a bigger family in the extremely low-income category. And I think where we can have the workforce housing overlays sort of density bonuses and changes from some of our otherwise required elements, I think it should be keyed off of the very low-income category. To the, you know, I understand some of it says, state law says, if you have a hundred percent available to moderate AMI, we can't change that because that's being keyed off, which is to my question earlier. But where we can say, this should be off of the very low category because that's the category. Unfortunately, the teachers in the school district that serves the town are in. We should be using that income category. And then last point, and this is a question I didn't have a chance to ask earlier. There was a question about, this was in the context of School Street, but the numbers here not matching a hundred percent with what we're assuming in the RINA numbers. And is HCD going to want to see it to match? Just based off of the timeline we are provided is my understanding that they're going to vote up or down on the housing element one way or another before we adopt any of this.
So, no, they will be looking at the ordinance. My assumption is that because, so the actual statutory deadline for adopting a certified housing element was January of this year. And because that didn't happen, all the rezoning necessary to accommodate the RINA needs to be accomplished by January thirty-first of next year. And so I think where the state is not going to issue a letter saying that Fairfax's housing element is certified until the zoning is adopted. So they are going to be looking closely at the zoning. But would you like me to answer the question that I think you're asking? Is there a way to get to the numbers?
Well, just in general, I guess it's less of a question than a point. I assume one way or another, we're going to need to make the numbers then in here fit in the assumptions for the housing element.
Yes, in the specific example of School Street, they do. And I can explain how, if you'd like. Okay, so go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, you had mentioned earlier, you had forgotten a comment. So maybe you could take this time to do that as well as.
Sure, I can. I mentioned it in the presentation, but I think it also is a direct answer to Commissioner Janson's question, why are we doing this? The current zoning map does not have sufficient capacity to accommodate Fairfax's lower-income RINA allocation. And therefore, rezoning to, rezoning of certain sites to densities that are deemed affordable to lower-income households, meaning twenty dwelling units per acre, is required in order to get a certified housing element. And so the best locations to zone properties at twenty dwelling units per acre are typically in the town center or along Sir Francis Drake. And so the workforce housing overlay is a strategy to make sure that Fairfax's zoning map does have the capacity to accommodate lower-income RINA. And they're the locations where it just makes the most sense. And so that's really the primary reason for doing this. If Fairfax does not adopt something like the workforce housing that creates that capacity for twenty dwelling units per acre and enough sites to accommodate the lower-income RINA, then Fairfax risks not having a certified housing element. And the consequences of that could be that the state comes in and does a housing element for you and makes all these decisions. So that is really the reason, why are we doing this? To get a certified housing element and, to the extent possible, to retain local control over zoning and project approval. That would have been the best answer to your question. If I could continue on to answer the School Street question, there is actually a path in the ordinance to get to the number in the inventory. And so that is, the School Street Plaza site is located in the workforce housing overlay A-zone. If the property owner makes a commitment to twenty-five percent of the units being affordable rentals for lower-income households, then they're entitled to seventy-five dwelling units per acre. On a two-acre site, that's a hundred and fifty units. Additionally, there's bonus units if they provide a certain number of family-sized apartments, so, you know, two- or three-bedroom units. And I think there's another bonus in for, I think it's very, very low income. And so when you add those, when, if you assume that they make the maximum commitment to affordability and get the maximum density per two-acre site, plus take advantage of those two bonuses, then there is a pathway to get to the number.
Yep, thanks. And I'm familiar with sort of stacking bonuses for some of these projects. So that makes sense. Thanks.
To the question on the commitment to the income levels, would these, and you mentioned rentals for School Street Plaza, would these all be deed restricted for fifty, fifty-five years?
Yes. So if they're, if they're making a twenty-five percent commitment, they would need to do a deed restriction for a period of fifty-five years.
For how many years?
Fifty-five.
Oh, okay. I thought you said five. Any other comments, discussion? Go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, a couple of them. The so I think the thing that's fundamentally wrong is that the bonus works towards creating taller buildings instead of finding more infill or horizontal capacity. I know it's late in the game, but I think that, and the problem here is the height of the buildings. I think everybody can see that, and I'll come back to that later. So that is unfortunate that we are in this location because, to a degree, it's locked in in the current housing plan. But that's, listening to it, that's where the where the bad part of this specifically element is going to work. So because this does not only apply to meeting our current RINA numbers, this is going to apply to all property owners who would like to do this. It's going to be part of our code for the next eight years. So it's unlassing a beast that we might not have wanted to unlassed. Having said that, not being able to have our housing plan work is a very bad situation. So we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. So then there's two things that come to mind. The first one is that the additional height is only allowed if the housing is built over commercial. That means the tallness of these buildings doesn't serve the, meeting the RINA numbers. It only serves, and that's unfortunate, what Commissioner Kelly brought up, it would sacrifice commercial space underneath. But so if you can build a hundred and fifty units on the School Street Plaza site, you can do that with three stories. Because the four-story you only get if you put commercial under it. So that is one tool to prevent buildings being that tall. And I think the second part is the devil is in the details. I think the current way it's written, and I do this for a profession, so I know how it works. But if I read this correct, I can make a building with a slope roof and a commercial on the ground that's fifty-five feet, not forty-eight. And I'm allowed to exceed that fifty-five feet, up to ten feet for an elevator or a stair. So I could have a building that is sixty-five feet at a certain location, and then the kicker. And this is where it gets bad. There's a determination that you have to do a ten-foot setback on these buildings, except that is for seventy-five percent of the streets facing the elevation of a story. So my elevator tower could be on the corner of the property. And I could have a roof that slopes in one direction, and I could have a vertical wall that goes sixty-five feet on right next to the sidewalk. That's an illustration that the devil is in the details. And so the way the language is written, I think, needs to be rethought about, that that cannot occur. If you take a devilish approach on this, then I can make a monster of a building. So I think with those two tools, so that's why we're trying to find a solution. I mean, going back to the beginning, saying, okay, we should have done this different, is going to go throw a wrench in the whole approval of actually getting our RINA numbers approved. And I do not, nobody wants to go there. That's a bad idea. I think the solution is in those two things. I would like to basically eliminate that bonus if you put commercial underneath. We're trying to do this for housing and sacrificing, which is unfortunate. If you do it, you sacrifice the commercial component at that location. And then the second one is fix those details so that the, that there's no deliberate or undeliberate accident that something like that happens. Those are my thoughts.
Can you repeat the last part of that with, where you mentioned the commercial underneath?
So the, right away, so you're allowed to do three stories and up to thirty-five feet. And so if you're doing the math and you get all your bonuses, you get all your housing units. But you cannot do forty-eight feet with housing. You cannot do four stories of housing. You only can bump up your total building height if you place those housings over a commercial area. And that's a, it's a good design, but the scale of that is a bit much for Fairfax. So I think the simple trick to limit the height to thirty-five feet, plus, of course, you can have some overruns for elevator or stair, would be to not allow that bump up if you put commercial on the ground floor. Then technically, you can still get to your RINA numbers, but you can prevent buildings being that tall. Now, the only thing to test that against, and I don't know that, and I think that harkens back to what's been mentioned by other commissioners as well. I think you want to do a math that what we, as a town, allow is slightly less than what the state allows because that is in the benefit of the town. In the, I'm talking about height mostly, because it's not about number of units. That's not the problem. The problem is tall, massive buildings. As illustrated, developers might want to still do it because it's a much more streamlined procedure, so they might go for it. And, but I think that's a math that needs to be done because if we're too far off, then they will just go to the state route and they'll do it anyway. And I think so somewhere there is a play that we could do and get the best out of the situation we're currently already in. That would be my recommendation along those lines.
Question, since a couple commissioners brought up prevailing rate, can the town require that for any of this?
The town can. What I understand from conversations with developers, though, is that it is essentially a death knell to the fiscal financial feasibility of the projects. They don't get built with prevailing wage very often. And it's very difficult, especially when you're talking about infill and the cost of land and the cost of labor, when you add all these things up, when you add the prevailing wage on top of all that, then the financial feasibility just becomes too challenging.
But it can be a requirement.
I believe it can be.
Any other? Go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on that point. This is not a directed at you or anything with, because I a hundred percent believe that the developers would say that it doesn't pencil out. But to, back to the sort of, then why do this? Question, if we say we don't need the prevailing wage requirement because no developers are saying you can't build in that situation, and the consequence of not having a compliant housing element is, or, you know, them taking advantage of all these state bonus laws, which require them to use a prevailing wage anyway. Are they, does it, who cares? Because they're not going to build because it doesn't pencil out? Because they, even under the state route, they have to use the non-revelling wage? I think, I think it's sort of, you know, it's like every time there's a proposal and an increase in a minimum wage, there's a segment of a business community that says, you're going to kill jobs. And ultimately, over time and history and studies show that that doesn't happen. It doesn't affect overall hiring rates. So, you know, I totally understand and believe that we need to listen to what they're saying as to what pencils out. I just don't think we need to, I think we need to, you know, think a bit more skeptically about that. And also, you know, there's knock-on effects that we have less control over here. But if we have a prevailing wage requirement, the state law has a prevailing requirement, and they're saying it doesn't pencil out, there's not going to be no business because there's going to be, at some point in which their costs and their inputs are going to have to be priced less because nobody's buying them to build. And then it will slowly pencil out a little bit more easy because there are other input costs. People aren't selling land for as much because nobody can develop it at the prices they had been selling it for. You know, I don't, I, I would rather err on the side of making sure that the ordinance reflects how we think it should be than say, oh, you know, we can't do that because what if, what if it's not going to be developed?
Any other comments, discussion items, Commissioner Newton?
Here, here, I pretty much agree with what everybody's saying. I think we should be shooting for much lower income numbers. I think we should be keeping the height down, down, down. I mean, you know, is there some inverse proportion we could create that says, you know, I don't even want to go there because the height is so significant. Can we build out? I think Commissioner Janson discussed, you know, the horizontal as opposed to the vertical, the preferred way of undertaking infill. And, you know, I totally agree a hundred percent. And, you know, I totally agree 100% with respect to the prevailing wage and, you know, applaud all these guys.
Any other comments? Well, I think you've heard the discussion. So we'll see you back in January. Thank you. Right? It's tomorrow. Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Two quick points, though. We had a couple of PowerPoints today. I didn't see, we had asked, and I know everybody's busy, we had asked for the November PowerPoint to get uploaded. I'm not sure I saw it attached to the agenda line for last November. I mean,
I think we intended, I'll follow up on that.
So can we check that? Can we get those up from tonight? Because those are important for us and the community to look at. They were helpful on that. Okay.
Yeah, I think we can. We can put those on the housing element site and then we can create like a link.
Yeah, I would like to see it on both. So people, people may not go to the housing element, but they'll go back and look at what was presented tonight. So I think it should be on both. So now we're going to go to the minutes from the November meeting, which I have somewhere. So I had two corrections. I had a one correction that we had that there were no. I can send this to you also if you want, but we had no.
You were on mute.
I'll just write down your comments. Tell me the page number and.
The first page we had, it lists that we had no public comments on non agenda items and we had two comments under consent calendars. So they should be switched. Those consent calendar
Oh, yeah.
comments through the public comments. That was the only thing I was able to see on this. Did anybody else have any corrections? No? Okay, so I can't remember if we need to make a motion to. So can we have a, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes on the minutes? Go ahead. Sorry.
I realize it's not a common thing and I do appreciate the consideration. I just wanted to say that I encourage the commission to watch two town council meetings ago when Councilmember Hellman wanted to alter the minutes to make a different reflection of her comments. And I think that it's very bad form. I think there is a robust discussion about it. And it's something to always pay attention to. So we do not fall in that same trap when we think we're better than everything else. So I just want to bring that up. Not that I see that happening here today, but really to encourage everybody to look at a mistake that was two meetings ago. Thank you.
Any other corrections? Oh, I was making a motion. Sorry. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 29th with the correction I stated regarding the public comments and consent calendar items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote?
Kelly?
Hi.
Janson?
Hi.
Pepper?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. Motion. Any commissioner comments or requests? Nope, nope, nope. Okay. Oh, did you have one?
I was just going to make the comment that I miss Commissioner Newton being in the room.
Here, here.
Did she hear you?
Yes, I miss you guys too. And, you know, it's even more tomorrow here than there.
It's always more tomorrow there than it is here. Do we have a planning director's report?
I'm looking at the agenda. We have election of chair and vice chair.
Oh, I forgot that. So sorry.
And I have a matter of business because we have to hold a, we have, we need a meeting on January 11th. So I want to poll everybody and see who's available for January 11th before you, before you guys run away.
Can we do that under planning director's report?
Yes, I just don't want to get forgotten.
So did electing a chair come before planning directors?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you all. I'm going to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Janson as our chair for next year. That probably means that somebody else will have to make all the motions that you've been making this year that I noticed, and I appreciate that. Is there any discussions? Anybody else have any nominations or?
Well, to do them separately, I would just second that motion and.
Do we need a vote on that?
On everything.
Let the public speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're making, I apologize. We're making a nomination for the chair for 2024 to be Commissioner Janson.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion and I'd like to add evaluating like this meeting and a couple of other ones I've been to. I find this to be a very welcoming, informative and engaging meeting. And so again, from the public's point of view, thank you very much. And I encourage you guys to continue this type of meeting and hopefully it'll rub off on different environments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anybody on Zoom?
No hands online.
So I'm going to bring, I'm going to close the public comment on that. And can we have a vote?
Kelly?
Absolutely.
Janson?
Absolutely.
Pepper?
Yes.
Newton?
Definitely.
Chair Swift?
Really definitely.
Okay.
Now, do we have any recommendations for vice chair?
I would like to recommend Commissioner Pepper. I, as the newest person, happy to defer to Commissioner Kelly or Commissioner Newton. I don't, you know, I know the town council has some sort of formula for who goes next, but.
As you can tell, we don't follow the town council, so. Commissioner Newton, Commissioner Kelly? Either of you willing to be vice chair? Okay.
I would defer to, yeah, Commissioner Pepper if he's game. I think he's perfectly competent to be vice chair of the Fairfax Planning Commission. And I think he'd be in an excellent position to become a leader of our commission at some point. And I gotta say.
To do this or?
Yeah, I, I, if I'm, if I'm willing to stay here till forever, why not? I'd be happy to. I really do value the, I really do value the commission. So, you know, I, I would be happy.
Any, do we open that to the public? Public comment on our vice chair?
Don't let him escape. Thank you.
We won't. Was there? So a motion? We have a motion in a second? Motion from, is that a motion from you, Commissioner Newton?
Oh, yeah. Motion to for Commissioner Pepper to take over as vice chair, starting in our, starting now? I don't know. When do we start?
Next meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a vote, please?
Kelly?
Hi.
Janson?
Hi.
Pepper?
Yes.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
You're on mute.
Sorry. Can we have the director's report now?
Are you? Well, first of all, let's do the poll. We are contemplating having a meeting on January 11th. And so is everyone available on Jan? It's a Thursday. If that helps.
It's at the request of the town attorney. I'm sorry.
Would that be a special meeting and then we would have a normal meeting in January?
Probably. I mean, you could decide to just have the special meeting if you wanted to, but it. Oh, that's true. We, yeah, we have to. But we can, but we can do workforce housing on January 11th.
We could.
We could.
So let me ask this again. So January 11th would be revisiting workforce housing.
And and any and another item that we may need.
A potential hearing.
Potential.
I'm going to need.
Sorry. January 11th would be a special meeting where we revisit workforce housing and any applications that we would have at the time.
Yeah, you're going to have to hear 339.
I'm just trying to see if we're going to do a special meeting. That's our only meeting.
You know, sometimes it's hard for us to tell this far in advance because we never know when people are going to complete their applications, you know? And so I wouldn't even want to say.
Okay, so the answer is we don't know. We may have a special meeting and a regular meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So is everybody available as they see now for January 11th?
Yes.
And I'll double check my calendar when I get home.
Yeah, just as it, as it considers for anybody, that is the Thursday before Martin Luther King Junior Day weekend. It's a long weekend. I don't know if just for people to consider if people might be out of town. I don't think I am, so I'm available, but just wanted to flag.
I said I was going, I was going to check my calendar at home. I should be, but I'm going to check. Commissioner Newton, are you available on the 11th of January?
Yeah, I apparently am.
Good scheduling. So we only have one commissioner left that we need to check with. All right. What else? Yeah, I will double check. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Oh, and just a quick follow up. I think I mentioned there's some training opportunities. And so if if you're interested specifically in the the league's planning commissioner training, which I think I'm trying to remember, do you remember when that was?
I think it's in Long Beach. I think in the deadline is, I want to say February 8th, but you can.
Yeah.
I can see that. I've got that on some agenda that I saw. And the only thing would be if if the hotel is full, but somebody would have to find their own. But yeah.
Anyway, just if 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 anybody's interested in that, just email and and let us, let me know. Probably by the end of the month, at the very latest, so we can make sure hotels and that type of thing are available and we have, and, you know, we lock down the budget. That's that type of thing. So.
I remember there was another event in Santa Rosa that you mentioned.
There's, well, that they're a little bit disorganized this year. It's in Ronert Park. It's in Sonoma State University. And they usually have an annual conference, but they have not put out the announcement yet. So I think it's probably a little bit shaky this year, but it's always a good conference and it's very local. So.
And in looking on their website, I think last year's conference was like in August. So they may be more a fall thing now.
Yeah. I mean, he's, he, when I asked him, I talked to him directly, he said March, but so, but I don't. Like I said, I think you may be more accurate because I think maybe they plan on having it in the spring and then it gets pushed to the, they're a little bit loose lately with that particular conference. So.
So do we have a motion to adjourn? Well, let's not all rush.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
No one favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you all.